Is that monitor not working Bill?
Excuse me?
Is that monitor not working?
Is that?
That monitor is not working?
Uh, no, it's not set up for these.
If you can get the uh, the video to, the feed to show on there, it is live and recorded now.
Okay, alright, alright, thank you.
Audio is working alright.
Alright, good evening everyone, um, welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board for Wednesday, March eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Present this evening, uh, Thomas Chanacki, Clerk of the Board, Richard Clark member, David Durgan member, Daniel Edmiston, uh, Vice Chairman, I believe, right?
I believe so, Mr. Chairman.
We need to update our, our header.
I did, I did already.
Okay, thank you. And our Town Planner, William Scanlon, uh, also myself, uh, Guy Horn Chairman.
And?
Oh, sorry.
Caitlin.
Caitlin.
Joyce.
Is Caitlin Moran, Caitlin Moran, our new clerk for the planning board. Thank you. Um, first item on our agenda this evening, Fudge of Allegiance.
Fudge of Allegiance.
Fudge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
It's like the Cubs Cubs.
Yeah. Uh.
That's great.
So, in new business, item number one, approval of minutes from February twenty-second. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at the, uh, minutes from February twenty-second? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Chairman, I would move if we accept the meeting minutes from February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, yes, President.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Just one copy we need, Bill?
Two.
Two copies?
No, we got one going, that one.
Can you get it, Guy?
Yes, I can.
You got a second?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. We have the options where we would, where we would. Second, if anyone wants to.
There's one.
Thank you.
Go back up for you.
Okay. All right, number two on the agenda in our plans, we have none for this evening. Um, we have a public hearing coming up at seven fifteen, but we're not there yet, so we're gonna go out of order a little bit. Let's move down to the standard business, item number one. Discussion status report and finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pierpont Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Eisenhower Drive, Tobin Farm Estates, Lion Estates. Do we have anything on those?
A couple of things, um, I spoke with the engineer from Lion Estates.
Okay.
And he expressed an interest in trying to complete that subdivision quickly and hope to get it to town meeting for acceptance in the fall.
This year?
Yes, so that means he's got a fair amount of work to do to, uh, finish up the work on the roadways and the, uh, the drainage systems, et cetera.
Burns and Cylons.
He felt like if they, you know, worked diligently, they should be able to get it done in time, and then we could get the myelags for the asphalt and the acceptance plans and go through the street acceptance process. We'd have to have Jeff Walsh review the work, make sure that it conforms to the regulations and complete Form H, et cetera. So, there's a fair amount of work to do, but it's possible.
Is it possible to accept the street if all the houses aren't completed?
If the road's done, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's good.
How many houses aren't done? I haven't been up here much.
Only about, only about half of them are built. No, a lot of, some of the lots, nothing.
So, there's no concerns about heavy equipment driving up or down the road or anything like that?
I think there would be if, you know, for example, if the foundations weren't in yet and you had, you know, big cement mixers going down the street, it might create a problem, but if most of the heavy work is done, then the, the road should be able to handle
Okay.
normal, you know, contractor's vehicles.
Right, okay.
Uh, the other item here is, um, the extension request for Dudley Estates off of Jesse Road. Um, we talked about that a little bit last meeting. Since then, I have a, a letter from the engineer on the project, uh, with a little bit more information, and I spoke with him just before the meeting tonight. So, apparently, there was a buyer of the property who's very interested, they have an agreement on the price. He wants to be sure that he has all the permits in place, so apparently the conservation, uh, notice of intent is good for three years, so he's still good there. He has a meeting set up with the Water and Sewer Commission to make sure that the, uh, water connection permit is still valid.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, he needs subdivision approval in order to go forward at all without having to refile. So, it appears that there were some significant developments, uh, for this project, uh, that I think justify granting another extension so that, uh, he can move forward and, uh, do, uh, get all his ducks in a row so that he can actually close on the property too, uh, and then start working.
So, is this, um, buyer s- signed a purchase and sale agreement or anything that they could show us?
According to Mr. Osgood, they have an agreement, but it's not in writing yet, but they've agreed on a price, and it's sufficient for the buyer to do a lot of additional work to carry it forward to make sure that, uh, everything is in order.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, how many extensions have we given, and what does this date back to? I mean, this has been for a number of years.
I'm gonna say probably three extensions so far.
The three strikes are out, isn't there some, are there any limits to this, or we just go on and?
Well, I mean, I think at the last time this came up.
Last time we came up, we said one year.
Uh, yes.
And that year is up, when?
Um, I think the end of this month or the end of next month.
I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I mean, if, 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 if the owner came in with a purchase and sale agreement and showing that there was somebody interested in it, I, I would be willing to extend it, but if, if we don't have anything in writing, I, I mean, the, the engineer's telling you this, we don't know if it's true or not.
I have no reason to doubt him, I mean, I think he does have an appointment with the Water and Sewer Commission, so he is, you know, doing his homework to make sure that he can still go ahead with it. But if, if you like, I can, we can talk about it again at the next meeting and actually give.
I was gonna just ask, uh, do we have to do it tonight? Do we have to act on it tonight, or do we wait till the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, from what you've said, uh, the extension may not be necessary until the end of the month anyway.
Right.
Alright, so we'll see where the situation sits at that point.
Okay.
Uh, again, though, we've had a number of things, like the, the Nichols College and ninety-nine Center Road, these things have been agreed to, these things have been in the works, this is gonna happen, and they just, I mean, we sit here months later and we find that it still hasn't happened, I mean, all the best wishes in the world and get signatures on paper.
Well, I think with this particular project, it's gonna be difficult, and
That's all wet.
A lot of potential buyers looked at it and decided, you know, not, not to pursue it, but now we actually have somebody, so it took them a while to find a buyer who was willing to go forward, so that's why nothing ever happened.
And Mr. Chairman, if possible, to have the seller in here is one thing, but have the buyer in here and actually hear what his intentions are, to hear it from the horse's mouth, if that's possible, that'd be a pretty good idea as well.
Mm-hmm.
The seller could tell us pretty much anything he wants to, and he doesn't speak for the buyer.
Right.
Yeah, but if there's no intent to, to start this one out for years, then maybe it's something to think about. If they sell it and then the new guy's like, oh, it's gonna be a couple of years before I get the funds together.
Would you like me to put him on the agenda for the next meeting and see if we can get him in here?
I think, I think that'd be good.
Okay.
Okay. Still have five minutes here, so let's go on to the inspections and actions associated with site plans, Legacy Landing Country Club Acres, SEP Solar, Oxford Avenue, J D and D, twenty-four Oxford Avenue, and Stevens Mill, so I think we got Stevens, uh, we don't have Stevens Mill, we have Allen Mill today here. Um, any, any updates on those four?
No, I don't have any new information on those.
Okay.
Uh, just an observation, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, walking the dog in the neighborhood, uh, that perimeter as far as Legacy Landing Country Club Acres is, uh, pretty shaky.
Still deteriorating.
I'm trying to find a good word for it, and I don't have a good word for it.
Mm-hmm. We haven't.
Hopefully, there's some opportunity for some town engineer to take a look at it, or a building inspector or someone.
Consultant town engineer hasn't been out there since, since the last time.
No, not that I'm aware, we haven't seen any more reports. You may recall on Pierpont Estates, though, we had asked Jeff to do a completion estimate
Right.
for the entire subdivision.
Yeah.
And then consolidate all of the se- securities that we have into one, one place, so.
Has that come through yet?
No.
No, okay. Alright, and number three, what Mr. Clark was just mentioning, um, a review for decision, Nichols College Town Homes Project, impossible vote to approve. I mean, I believe it's already voted that, that we, um, approved it, but they needed to come back and show us that they actually had ownership of the property, has that happened yet?
I checked the registry of deeds today, nothing has come through yet, so still have it closed.
Alright. Continued discussion of possible zoning amendments for town meeting. And I think the last time we met, we, we did.
That could take some discussion, maybe we should hold off on that until after, after the.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, going back to number three, view decision of this college town, is this, I, this is some months now, and we're waiting for the shoe to drop on this ninety-nine Center Road property. How long do we wait? I mean, uh, I mean, will we all be retired by the time this finally happens, or when is this, are any dates associated with these things?
There's no deadline for the planning board, right? I mean, it's up, up to them to move forward on it.
It's already approved, we just need to.
Right, I know, but I mean, you'd think that, that people would finish something and get final approval and.
You, you have no idea what they ran into, you know?
Well.
It's an old property.
Yeah, closing takes a long time.
Yeah, I mean, if they're, if they're.
Maybe I'm more impatient than, than you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I mean, well, it's kinda, you know, old property, could hundred years, could have a hundred year old easement they're trying to get rid of.
I think it dates back to eighteen seventies if I'm not mistaken, so maybe some connection there, okay.
Declare the deed and everything, gonna take them a while.
Well, the good news is that while it's still in private hands, we're getting some tax revenue from it hopefully.
Alright. Alright, um, let's, yeah, we'll skip the zoning amendments for now, is there anything on the plan's plate?
Uh, a couple of things, a couple of meetings ago, the board decided to use its LPA time with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission to look at short-term rentals as a possible zoning amendment. When I brought that up to the staff at CMRPC, they thought it'd be a good project to do as a regional study. So, they are applying to their physical development committee to do a district local technical assistance investigation on this matter that would apply to the entire region. They felt that there were other towns that would be interested in this, so rather than just focusing on Dudley, do a sort of a larger effort to look at all of the issues involved and provide sort of guidance to communities on how to deal with that, so, so they're pursuing that angle, they have meeting, I think, is it tomorrow or
They, they tomorrow, I think, yes.
to, uh, to get approval for that study.
So, that, if, if they were doing it for all, a group of towns versus just us singly, um, it should be a cheaper project for us, right?
Well, they're not even using LPA time.
Okay.
So, we still have our time left, our hours that we can
Does that.
figure out some other use.
Does that expire at any time, or?
June thirtieth.
So, we have to, we have to designate something before June thirtieth?
We could, you know, circle back to that later in the meeting if you want, and see if you have some other thoughts.
Yep.
Um, secondly, there's an open space and recreation plan forum scheduled for March twenty-third at six P M. at the Pearl Crawford Library.
Okay.
Um, we're hoping to get a good turnout, so you're all invited, Richard is on the committee, so he'll be there.
He'll be there.
Um, and we're hoping to get fifty, sixty people, something like that. We have, uh, raffle prizes of Busox tickets, and, uh, we think Chris Lindstrom is gonna come and, um, promote, promote the plan as well. Chris is a NFL football player with the Atlanta Falcons, so we think people might wanna come and meet him, so, so he's gonna come, and, oh, it's not confirmed yet, but we, we think he'll be there.
Okay.
Um, and that's an obviously an important mechanism for public participation, so as many people as are interested in that topic, if they can all come, it'll make a stronger plan and give us, uh, more ideas to, to put into the plan. And then, um, I wanted to mention that we have talked about updating the floodplain zoning bylaw, which you've seen a draft, and FEMA has revised the firm maps, and they just came in today, take you a while to see one. So, these will be effective on June seventh of this year, so we'll put that date into the zoning bylaw. So, the zoning bylaw will reference these new maps.
Okay.
And then we'll have to revise how overly district to coincide with the new boundaries.
Okay, that was gonna be my question, do you have to change anything?
I think we do, yeah, in order to be, uh, consistent.
Consistent.
If anybody wants to look at this, I can pass it around, or you can look at it after the meeting.
Yeah.
Do we have to notify the new people who are gonna be in this?
No, there's no requirement, but it might affect people who weren't in the floodplain before, who now are and should get insurance.
Yeah.
So, this will maintain the town's membership in the National Flood Insurance Program, which allows people to get subsidized rates for flood insurance.
Alright, so, we're, we're a couple of minutes past, but we need to have our, uh, public hearing at seven fifteen. Do we have the notice to read, Bill, in place?
Uh, I forgot it, I can, I can look it up if you like.
Okay.
We could, you know, circle back to that later in the meeting if you want, and see if you have some other thoughts.
Yep.
Um, secondly, there's an open space and recreation plan forum scheduled for March twenty-third at six P M. at the Pearl Crawford Library.
Okay.
Um, we're hoping to get a good turnout, so you're all invited, Richard is on the committee, so he'll be there.
He'll be there.
Um, and we're hoping to get fifty, sixty people, something like that. We have, uh, raffle prizes of Busox tickets, and, uh, we think Chris Lindstrom is gonna come and, um, promote, promote the plan as well. Chris is a NFL football player with the Atlanta Falcons, so we think people might wanna come and meet him, so, so he's gonna come, and, oh, it's not confirmed yet, but we, we think he'll be there.
Okay.
Um, and that's an obviously an important mechanism for public participation, so as many people as are interested in that topic, if they can all come, it'll make a stronger plan and give us, uh, more ideas to, to put into the plan. And then, um, I wanted to mention that we have talked about updating the floodplain zoning bylaw, which you've seen a draft, and FEMA has revised the firm maps, and they just came in today, take you a while to see one. So, these will be effective on June seventh of this year, so we'll put that date into the zoning bylaw. So, the zoning bylaw will reference these new maps.
Okay.
And then we'll have to revise how overly district to coincide with the new boundaries.
Okay, that was gonna be my question, do you have to change anything?
I think we do, yeah, in order to be, uh, consistent.
Consistent.
If anybody wants to look at this, I can pass it around, or you can look at it after the meeting.
Yeah.
Do we have to notify the new people who are gonna be in this?
No, there's no requirement, but it might affect people who weren't in the floodplain before, who now are and should get insurance.
Yeah.
So, this will maintain the town's membership in the National Flood Insurance Program, which allows people to get subsidized rates for flood insurance.
Alright, so, we're, we're a couple of minutes past, but we need to have our, uh, public hearing at seven fifteen. Do we have the notice to read, Bill, in place?
Uh, I forgot it, I can, I can look it up if you like.
Okay.
Would you like me to read it, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Okay. In accordance with the provisions of section five point oh four, site plan review of the Dudley zoning bylaw, the Dudley Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven fifteen P M. in the Dudley Municipal Complex, room three twenty-one A. Uh, on the application of DMA Holdings MA LLC for modification of a previously approved site plan in thirty-five to thirty-seven Chase Avenue. The property owner is Verde Organic, Organic LLC, sixteen Villa Street, Dudley, Mass. The applicant previously received a special permit for an adult use marijuana establishment, including retail sales, manufacturing, and cultivation. The applicant proposed is to modify the current site plan by adding a new utility pad to accommodate the manufacturing component. The site plan was prepared by Dillson Roy, One Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass, oh one four six two. The site is in, in industrial forty-three district and the mill conversion overlay district. Property is listed as Assessor's Map one eighteen, parcel thirty-seven. Copies of the plan and application are on file in the Planning Board Office and the Town Clerk's Office, both of which are located in the Dudley Municipal Complex, seventy-one West Main Street, Dudley, Mass, and may be inspected during regular working hours. The Planning Board will receive public input at the public hearing, any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. If you wish to comment but are unable to attend, please submit either an email to plan@dudleyma.gov or a written comment to the Planning Board Office at seventy-one, uh, West Main Street, Dudley, Mass. Before four thirty P M. on March seventh, two thousand twenty-three, Guy Horn, Chairman of Dudley Planning Board.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to start off, yes?
Mr. Chairman, Nick Adamopolis, um, attorney for the applicant, um, just wanna say thank you for having us tonight. Um, as was mentioned, the proposal in front of you today, um, only deals with the manufacturing, which would be the building that is connected to the current retail spot. Um, we're asking for just a slight modification to the site plan that was previously, um, approved, just to allow for the addition of some um, utility pads in the exterior to handle HVAC systems and other mechanical devices that would be needed for the manufacturing portion of the building. Um, these would be going on, uh, areas right now that, um, we won't be changing any of the impervious areas or anything like that, we did already have this reviewed by Conservation. We did get their approval once we got the D E P, um, number from Conservation. Um, and this is a slight change from the original application we had filed with the board, um, that had also included some proposals for cultivation. After, um, being told of some potential information that was brought to the board's attention that may not have been false, may not have been true, we decided to take the cultivation portion off, allow for this modification to be reviewed by the board, um, to see if we can at least begin the process of getting that manufacturing up and running so that we can get before the CCC by the end of two thousand twenty-three, um, while maybe addressing some of the information that was brought on for cultivation, um, maybe getting some input from the board so that we can then come forward again with, um, the cultivation aspect of this project. But ultimately was taken off just due to the fact that we were made well aware of some false information that was given to the board that we weren't able to address prior to tonight. Um, but for tonight's purposes, we're just asking for the, the utility pads to be allowed to be put in the exterior of the buildings so that we can, um, have the mechanical devices necessary to get the manufacturing up and running. I do know, just for your clarification, I believe we got Graves the peer review letter the other day.
Yes.
It appeared to be very, very, didn't appear that there was any, um, comments on there, I think there was just one that Frank could discuss, but I don't know if there was anything directly affecting the, the plan itself.
No, uh, the, the one outstanding, uh, my name's Frank Bartlett, I'm the engineer with Dillson Roy on the project. Uh, the one, uh, remaining outstanding comment from Graves just dealt with, um, uh, providing more information about the stabilization of the, uh, area of the existing building that was demolished, which is, uh, this lighter brown area with, with the minus hatching in it. Um, right now, it's sitting with, and, uh, it's, it's sitting with, uh, gravel and, uh, construction de- debris kinda spread out over the, the area of, of the building, kind of almost in a rubble riprap type, uh, situation. Um, it is, uh, from my ob- my observations on, on the site, on the number of times I've been out here, it is currently stable. Um, and, uh, the silt fence, uh, straw wattle that is along the edge of, the outer edge of the pavement, around pretty much the whole, uh, French riverside of, of the pavement, has been in good, uh, condition every time I've been out there. So, there's, there's no real, um, uh, stability or erosion condition go- going on out, out there in that, um, within the limits of that building, or within, and any of the, uh, construction that's gone on, on the site.
How much erosion would you expect in February when it's snowing?
Oh, uh, February, none, uh, but I am also speaking to times that I've been out, uh, this building was demolished.
Was over a year ago?
Over a ye- a year ago now, so, uh, when I speak to making site visits, um, I've been up to the site multiple times, uh, since the building was demolished. Pro- probably a half dozen times.
Where are your A C pads going?
So, the, uh, the, the HVAC pads would be, uh, at the corner, Bill, Building Six, these two here.
Yeah.
And then another HVAC pad at the corner of the gravel parking area, and then a long, um, HVAC pad parallel to the, the building there. Uh, the pads that are called out in the gravel parking area will have, uh, bollards installed to protect them from, um, uh, vehicular tra- traffic.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, you're not gonna grow product at this point, is that correct then?
So.
You're gonna be moving it in from some other location.
I'm sorry?
You're gonna move it in from some other location.
For the manufacturing, yes, we have agreed, we've already entered certain agreements to, um, make sure that we have product to be available. We would bring in the flour and then ultimately convert it in the manufacturing. The goal is to grow product at this facility, um, but I do think that, if there's a point at the end of this meeting that we could discuss some of the points that were brought to our attention, to just bring those to the board's attention, the general public's attention, they may have heard those, um, maybe get some feedback from the board of, you know, ultimately how they may wish us to move forward with the cultivation aspect, but for the manufacturing, yes, we'd be bringing third-party product in and doing the extraction and the, the kitchen work within the facility.
How much additional traffic would that be in terms of bringing the product in, I don't know where you're bringing it from, this is.
Potentially four or five Sprinter vans a week, it wouldn't be any sort of.
Minimal.
It'd be very, very minimal, and where the pads are going, that gravel parking lot back there is solely for employee parking only. It's behind the fence that got put up, there's now a working gate to make sure that only employees can access there, so none of the general population, uh, or any of our customers would be accessing the back end where those pads are, um, so any potential issues for vehicular traffic going in there, pulling it out would only be solely for when our employees are leaving, um, it wouldn't be something that'd be ultimately accessible to anybody else.
If I may, the river was mentioned, what is the condition of that riverbank and back of that building? Uh, I think earlier on, when folks first came before us, we were hoping that that would be, uh, be some remediation there or some cleanup or improvement in terms of the general condition of the river. The idea of the hope being that somehow we could link that at some point in future with what would be happening at the Stevens property.
We've done cleanup projects probably a half a dozen times, not only on our property, including the property that goes down Chase Ave towards Webster, but also to other areas in the town. We've reached out to the town hall and asked for areas where we could have our employees go there early in the morning to do up these cleanup projects.
Uh-huh.
So, we've done cleanup projects just around our property, not even doing it as just a group project, just having employees go out there during the day to clean up, but we've also gone all over our way to try to find areas that we can clean up around town, we picked up nip bottles, um.
I love those nip bottles, I could show you where you could find a lot of nip bottles if, if you're really after those.
You know, we've also reached out, um, last year, I believe it was during Veterans Day, we reached out to the, um, Veterans Council here and we helped. we reached out to the Veterans Council here and we helped them go around town and we put the flags in all the cemeteries and things like that. So if there's projects that we can do for cleanup or there's areas, I mean, I know that with the weather getting better, they're always looking for ways of showing the community that they're out there and that we're in town. So if there's areas, please just reach out and we can at least put them in front of the group.
There will be a town sponsored Earth Day coming up in April. I forget the exact date, but I'm sure it's on the website somewhere. To follow up on that, thank you very much for what you've done in terms of cleaning up. If the thought does come into fruition, would people, if we created something in the way of a Riverwalk, if you will, have access to the back of that property? Is there, you folks have that thought in mind or some provision for that?
So I believe when we first came, the conversation we had was if there was going to be an access point, it would be through the parcel on the other side of.
The other side of the building?
Bridge, just because.
Other side of Brandon Road.
Of Brandon Road.
Okay.
Because we own all that and that has access and we could try to clear up some of that sort of be an easier way. We just have, with the security components of who could have access back there, we would be really infringing on the CCC and whether or not they'd want individuals going back.
The, the hope would be that we'd have something that was continuous.
And it may, it might be something we can find it, you know, we could talk about potential of a fence around the, the river or something along those lines as that moves over. You know, we had talked to Stevens when we had done our initial one, we haven't heard much back, you know, they're gearing up now to start breaking ground, so I'm assuming with more people in town, it's going to allow us, I mean, they're, the headquarters for us right now is on Village Street, it's a budding Stevens, so they'll know where to find us. But I, I think that, you know, listen, I'm not sure if this, the easiest way to say this, but people that like cannabis, I think are big proponents of trying to do nature and those type of things, so I think this would be a great way of interlocking the business with any sort of progress of towns.
Should be some synergy there.
I, I think that'd be the easiest way of saying it.
Yeah, thank you.
So you're just proposing the AC pads tonight, and then when you go into cul, cultivation or whatever, you come back to us anyways, right, when a new plan?
We would have to, so I mean, it's the elephant in the room, I'd love to address it. I mean, I saw the, the proposal we did first. We were proposing to put greenhouses on the exterior of the building, kind of where that light gray is. Ultimately, the market in Massachusetts has drastically changed. The price point for a pound of marijuana now has probably dropped over a thousand dollars per pound. Our lender came to us and said that our original build-off plan was going to not be something that was feasible. I mean, we weren't going to be able to make the money back. They are greenhouse projects coming up all across the Commonwealth now because, and these aren't greenhouses like maybe you and I think of, these are solid structures, glass structures that, you know, they're solid, all the HVAC systems for cleanup go in there. We were just brought up that in January, the, I think it was Mr. Petrinos came before you and said we were asking to use 125,000, 150,000 gallons per day. I don't know where that number came from.
Well, that number seems to change every time by a lot of.
10,000 gallons a day, 10,000 gallons a day.
That, that number goes like up and down, up and down.
Here's what bothers me. We have let water and sewer, we have let them know everything going forward, anytime we've done an iteration of this. We were told by Mr. Petrinos on numerous occasions that there was enough water that we could pull it off without any issue. We then went before the Water and Sewer Commission at his request, and were told, nope, no chance. You want to do it, go fix all the pipes running down Chase Ave, Schofield Ave, at your cost.
Well, no offense, we're not water sewage, so I just, I just think the numbers go up and down, up and down.
But this is why I'm trying to bring to your attention. We were then told, we put a well, we, we put a proposed well in the site.
Yes, I remember.
Because we were told that we couldn't use town water. That wasn't because we don't want to draw from the town. We, our plan was always to draw from the town. We then subsequently get told now that the reason the well got proposed is because we're not trying to pay water and sewer costs to the town of Dudley. That's not true at all. If, if someone came to us right now and said I can pull 10,000 gallons of water from the pipe on the street, we're going to, getting rid of the well and we're pulling 10,000 gallons. Plus, even if we use the well, I believe how Dudley's water and sewer bill is made up is that 60% of the bill is actually sewer runoff, so the discharge we would have would still be getting charged to us and we would still be paying the town. We're not trying to super vent any sort of payments to the town whatsoever. Anyone saying we're not trying to pay money to the town, that's just complete false. The only reason a well was put on there is because after we were told we couldn't pull the water and the expected cost of running those pipes was almost a million dollars, we sat down and tried to find a way of making this a feasible project. And when Jeremy Hendricks and I sat down, we said, we're right next to the river, why don't we see if we could do a potential well? So we drilled a test information, got it, and we realized there's a lot of water there. We would rather pull money, pull, not money, we definitely like money, but we would love to pull water just from the town. We 100% would. And it's 10,000 gallons a day, we have all the empirical evidence behind it, that's what we need for the greenhouse project. But because there was so much, so much information that just got brought, we didn't want to delay being able to move forward the manufacturing project. So we want to address that and then find a way to do, to work with the town so that the information's out there and we can address anything that they may want for approvals. We gave that original plan to DEP, they saw it, they didn't come back with any questions about anything. But if we can utilize the existing town water and have it run into that facility, and we were going to change the flow around the back so we could move the hydrants and make sure that the fire department came on, they were happy where we were going to put the hydrants and everything back there to give them the egress. But to sit there and say we wanted to use 150,000 gallons a day and that we proposed the well so we didn't have to pay the town, that's the furthest thing from the truth. We've let water and sewer know how much water we were going to be utilizing, we went there at their request and then walked through that meeting being like what just happened.
Where'd you get this information from?
Which information?
The 150,000.
I don't know where they got the 150,000 gallons from.
No, like where did you get it from? Because George Petrinos never came before the board, that was the.
Someone from Water and Sewer said, I was told that, we were told by George.
He got that number probably from your guy, Jeremy Hendrickson?
Jeremy Hendrickson?
Originally, your plan was going to be 170, 79,000.
We can't do that. The highest you can do in Massachusetts is 100, 179,000 gallons?
On that, on that board, on that meeting.
Which meeting?
July, the one you're talking about, they went before the, the water committee. So July 6th, 2022, he said, he came up with that number when you guys were using.
With the CHP system?
Yes.
And then when we came back and said that we weren't doing the CHP system, we needed less than the original 25,000 gallons we'd asked when we got our site plan, we were still told that the infrastructure in town couldn't support it.
Right, but he also said that this phase that he working on now, you, he said it would be six to 14,000, and then the next phase would be up to 50,000.
No, it's 10,000 gallons, 10,000 gallons a day.
Waiting for you right now.
For 65,000, for 65,000 square feet to grow.
Right, I'm just telling you, that's probably where they got the number from, Jeremy.
They should reach out to us before they come forward and start saying, why, why are we, why would our business have to pay for upgrades to pipes in the town? That is one thing that the CCC has come on and said that towns cannot hold us accountable for whatsoever. We pay a host community agreement fee for any sort of cost they'd be doing with this. We are trying to find a work around to make sure that this project can move forward so that we can get all these jobs into town and get this project up and running. The well was only brought because we were told we couldn't use town water. Not, not to try to circumvent anything. I don't want, I don't want anyone to think we're not trying to pay water and sewer fees or pay into the enterprise fund. We would love to not have to put a well in there and incur the expense of that and have to have an extra sort of filtration system put into the building so that we can get the PIFs and all that taken care of and make sure that we're not going to test hot when we send our product to the labs. We would love to use town water. And if we can, we can, and we can be told by the Water and Sewer Commission that there's enough that can come off, then we certainly will take the well off the project and move forward with town water and sewage.
The well was for the cultivation, not your manufacturing?
Nope. The well, even if we utilize the well just for your information, the water from that would only be utilized for the plants themselves. It would not be used for any potable water inside the property, not for any of the bathrooms or any of the running water inside. So it wouldn't make us a public water source because the water would only be pulled and put into the greenhouses if we went that way. My understanding now is 10,000 gallons may be something that's feasible and we're just trying to get information back from the town.
Now, on your manufacturing, that doesn't really use that water, right?
No, there, there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be an extreme uptake of water for the manufacturing.
Manufacturing, that was just for the cultivation, right?
100%.
For the growing, so you're proposing tonight.
Has nothing to do with that.
Yeah, so I'm not water sewage, so before we get into.
No, no.
Conversation, you know what I mean?
We can definitely use the existing water that's coming in for this.
For the manufacturing, what you're proposing tonight.
Yes.
Is just your AC condensers and whatever else.
Yep, and I, and I know we had gone before ZBA and got some approval for making sure if we put anything on top of the buildings, we got the variances and things like that so it was all even. But I believe we're, with how the manufacturing is going to be set up now, the utility pads are going to be the most feasible way of doing it.
That's, that's correct, yeah. The, the, they had explored putting this equipment on top of the building and it wasn't feasible with how, how the existing building was constructed.
Yeah.
So that, that's, that's what led to the, the external pads.
All right, so if I could just ask you, what, do you know what your current usage is for water?
I, I don't. I mean, I can't imagine it's very high because we have two bathrooms in the facility that are being utilized. Besides the retail area, the rest of the building right now is not being utilized for any employees or anything like that, so there's approximately the, the front third of the building where it's labeled as existing dispensary is, is, is active now.
So you're adding bathrooms or pretty much it's just?
There'll be, there'll be some uptick, because the uptick for water use into that will be, there'll be additional bathrooms because there needs to be for that, because we have to block off the two areas and there'll be some showers put in just to make sure that people are clean before they go into the rooms. But it, there's no drawing of water that's going into any sort of product or anything like that, so it'd be, you know, a, a normal commercial use for a building of that size. It wouldn't be an uptick of anything significant.
And are the other dark colored squares at the back of Building 6, are those more pads that you're talking about or?
So the, the, these were going to be, this was a couple of concrete storage pads, this square, square one here. And then this rectangular one was a, a temporary generator pad. There wouldn't be a generator located there, but it would be a pad in the event that one, one was needed, they would bring one out and park it there. This had been a, a trash compactor pad. A trash compactor and dumpster, and this was a, a minor reconfiguration to a loading dock. All within the limits of, of existing pavement. That kind of stifling pat, pattern here is where we would have more and more of a, of a heavy duty pavement, pavement section.
So what are your plans for where Drafters was, that building?
Well, right now, if we were able to move forward the cultivation, there would be items that would be going from the greenhouses into Building 1 and into Building 7 for post-harvest items before they went into manufacturing. The plan is still to move forward the cultivation, even though it's going to be on the demolished area, but utilizing the existing buildings to make sure that the post-harvesting, all the packaging of any flour and stuff happens inside there. If that's going to go out to third parties or be internally used and then make itself way into manufacturing, if we're going to convert it into, you know, edibles or concentrates. I mean, just for your information, all the, the drafter's side, all that was completely, we demolished the inside, had it, it was ready to be built. But ultimately, when we looked at the market and how things are going, I mean, the market right now is going through a very big change, not just on the cultivation side, but even the retail side. There's now, there's a lot of push on who can actually draw in customers and, you know, we want to thank the community because I can tell you right now, we're averaging somewhere probably anywhere between 180 to 300 people a day coming into that store. And we did put together a brief memorandum showing, you know, the sales through, you know, we've been open almost a year, I think a year in April. And, you know, we really want to thank the, the community. We've seen upticks every month of, you know, not just, you know, visits, but return visits, price, you know, the, the sales prices on things have gone up, how many people, items people are buying, which is good because the prices of those products are coming down because of the mature market and there's a lot of product out there at this point. Dudley's been great for us. You know, when we've worked with the police department, the fire department, the boards here, town administrator, we've always gotten a call back, we've always been able to get an answer. I mean, it's, we're, you know, working with other towns and Dudley has been, you know, unbelievable to work with. And that's not just coming from me, that's coming from, and the people, employees that are there. I mean, there was an issue that happened a few weeks ago, a police issue that happened outside the property. There was great communication between the town and the facility concerning what was going on there. So, you know, this has been a great community to work with.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, you, you mentioned employees. I, I believe at one point there was discussion of preference being given to Dudley residents as far as employment is concerned. I don't know how your numbers look today or was that something that was viable for you folks or did you have to reach out beyond the town?
We've brought in some people from other communities, but when we've put open applications, we've gone local people, we've had people, we had people that walked across the street and said, hey, when you're going to open up, we want to come with this. A lot of people, when they do want the jobs, they, they want the manufacturing and cultivation jobs because they have some kind of background dealing with the product, probably from personal experience, but those are the jobs they want. We've been very, very lucky. We haven't had tremendous turn, turnover inside the retail store. You know, we, we did have a lot of people that came, you know, we brought some of our ASMs and store managers from Colorado with experience and they were like, listen, four months in, you're going to see a full shift of people, that's how the market is. We've kept the vast majority of our employees.
How many do you employ?
I believe right now in the retail side itself, there's approximately somewhere between 35 to 45. That doesn't include the corporate staff that's up on Village Street, that's probably another 15 or 20.
That's the O'Connor Insurance property.
That's the old, we're leasing it from them, yep.
Are those full-time employees or part-time?
There's some part-time and the vast majority are full-time. There are a few that have come to us and who said, listen, if I can pick up a few hours, a couple of days. We have, and, you know, we went through some extra trainings with the police, with the police department because we now staff somebody at the, the check-in security area. So we had talked to, at the time, I think he was the sergeant with the current police chief.
Chief Weiner.
That was a former one, I call him Merrick just because I can't say his last name with the new police chief. You know, he came in, he gave us an overview of how to check for IDs and things along those lines. It was actually a good thing because he was able to say, listen, some of our officers should also get some training on that, so it was, it was a good thing. Like I said, whenever we reach out, we've reached out to fire, we had questions with the fire department with certain things and they come down immediately and start pointing out things for us. You know, we did, we did give back our HCA donations that we had talked about. Now, not only are we giving the 3%, but we also promised to give $20,000 a year in just donations. We are giving $10,000 to the project outside here for the playground. And then we just earmarked $10,000 that we wrote the check to the town and we specifically asked that 5,000 go to fire and 5,000 be utilized for something for the police department. So that's, that was just a $20,000 donation we give. I believe our CFO put this together, that based upon the sales from last year, local taxes should have been approximately $265,000 and then an additional $275,000 of HCA fees from the 3% that we have to pay. So about a half a million dollars for about 10, 10 months that we were opening and gearing up.
Any other questions?
Could you talk about the number of parking spaces that you're providing and how many new employees you'll be getting from the manufacturing component?
Employee-wise, there shouldn't be a substantial amount. I, I believe based upon the size that we're utilizing, I think the last few guys I remember were somewhere between 10 or 15 new individuals over two shifts. The parking lot that's existing would be able to handle that, but we also have the interior, entire back area that would have parking plus the area in front of Drafters that's still lined.
I think the original site plan called what, 140 or 146?
Yeah, and I, I have laid out on, on the plan.
We had, we had said, we had ultimately thrown down parking wherever we could so that we could just show it, so we had.
Well, so, uh, if, if I may, um, this, this layout has, um, I want to say a hundred and forty spa- spa- spaces, yes. Um, between the, uh, the new parking area that, that was constructed, the new gravel area. And this new gravel area, plus, um, the area to the south end of, of, of the property. There's, there's a hundred and forty designated parking spaces. So that, and that doesn't, uh, take up any spaces behind the security fence. So, um, at, in, in this rear area, there's no designated parking there at this time.
And that rear part's fenced off, so there's a fence that used to run next to Drafters. And then.
Correct.
Behind building six, um, there's also a fence that's still existing to make sure that there's no vehicle traffic go back there. But we just, um, finalized, we just got all the equipment in. So where this, where the gravel parking lot is for the employees, there's now a electronic fence, um, with their I Ds, they show their I D and opens up to make sure that only employees are going back there.
That's located, um, this dashed line here, well, that's a, that's a lighting conduit line, but it, it's at about that location. So it comes from the existing fen- fencing and goes across to the dis- dis- dispensary.
Is that station wagon going to stay in the southern parking lot?
Which one?
The station wagon that's been there, looks like it, someone left their car there.
Down next to the Drafters area?
Yeah, where Drafters was.
I wasn't aware of it, but I can definitely bring it up, I'm glad you brought it up, because I should know about it.
Every day, but.
It, it may be one of the A S Ms that goes there, um, I can just, I'll, I'll ask, because I wasn't aware of it, so thank you for bringing it up.
I just saw it every day, I just wondered.
No, I'm glad you brought it up.
Are you proposing any E V traveling stations?
Uh, not, not at this time, no.
We'll probably be proposing a zoning bylaw that will require E V stations, but failed at the last town meeting, but we might be bringing it forward again.
Okay.
Um, we'll take that into account, um, when, when, when we come before you with future, um, applications.
Okay.
Wasn't aware of that.
The building is in the floodplain, have, do you need to do any special floodplain proofing for this project?
Uh, no, we shouldn't, um, the, uh, the existing building, um, is set up above the, the floodplain. Um, the floodplain in this area is approximately, I want to say the elevation four oh eight. If memory serves me, and the finished floor of building six and the existing dispensary is, I want to say four fourteen.
And those buildings were already existing.
Correct.
From the prior, so we're not changing anything.
I'm a little confused as to how that, that works, but I'm assuming you don't need to.
Yeah, no, they, they, they're, they're, there wouldn't be any needed, um, yeah, the, the finished floor elevation is four thirteen and a half.
Okay.
In building six, so, so we're well above, uh, above the existing floodplain elevation. Um, and the previous work that was done on the, on the property, constructing the stormwater swale. That exists along, um, this portion, along the, uh, this portion of the driveway, if you can see my cursor once it catches up. Um, the outer elbow, uh, plus the basin that was constructed in this grass area. They actually in- increased the floodplain storage on, on the parcel. So there's, there's, there's no, there's no, uh, net decrease in floodplain, plain storage on, on the parcel through this proposed work. Or even, uh, the previous things that were in front of you.
The mill race comes through your property.
Excuse me, what was that, Bill?
The mill race, that, if you can zoom out a bit from Brandon Road, there were two bridges that crossed Brandon Road, one is a town bridge, it's called the Mill Race Bridge.
Okay.
And there's a portion of the floodplain that, that goes under the bridge and around the side of your building. So I think that blue area is part of that, the mill race.
So the, the, the floodplain line, um, doesn't match the elevation. That, um, that F I, F I, FEMA has out, out there, when, uh, when we looked at the topography versus what FEMA designated as the elevation. They don't really line up, and it's closer to the edge of pavement for most of, of the, the parcel until you get into, uh, the southern par- parking lot where it kind of flares out.
Okay. Just so you know, uh, the town is demolishing the Mill Race Bridge, that, that bridge is closed on the Brandon Road.
We can't wait.
Crossing.
We would love that bridge to get open. I think it closed about a month before we opened up, so we would love for it to get open.
So we've run out to bid, I think we've accepted the bid. So that work should be happening fairly soon. And then we have a, a plan to put in a temporary bridge to reopen the road.
Like a Bradley style or?
An Acro bridge. And then after that, there'd be a long-term plan to replace both bridges with one span. So it'd be a new bridge that would, uh, cross all the way over into Webster, but that's probably ten years away. But that's the ultimate solution.
Is that to fix both the Webster side and the Dudley side? Is that to fix both the Webster side and the Dudley side?
It would connect, right, both.
Wheelbarrows, shovels and tankers?
We have that on the D O T project information database. The town needs to do the right-of-way work first before any, any more design can happen. So it's going to take a while, but I just thought you should know that at some point.
We've been, we've been following closely. I, I just, you know, we just put that, like I said, I mean, it closed, I think, right before we opened up. Um, you know, all of our traffic is now becoming down Main Street, Webster and down Chase Ave, so we do hope that. We do, I, we actually hope that there might be an uptick of, of individuals, because a lot of people from Webster and Dudley were always utilized as a cut-through to avoid some of that traffic. So it might bring new people to even realize that we're not there. Um, I always just, when it first happened, I was shocked that the Dudley side was the issue and it wasn't the narrow part of Webster, because that, to me, that was always the more shady of the two.
Bill, the new map that you just got today, um, does that change any of the floodplain information?
I haven't checked, I, did you hear Frank that there are new floodplain maps?
I didn't hear, hear that, and I, and I note, noted that.
Okay.
What I, I had based my elevations on, uh, were, um, FEMA actually has, this is a very well-studied a- area, as, as I'm sure you, you're aware. Quite often the, the floodplain is just kind of a line on the map, and you don't get to see kind of, um, the background in, in information, but there, there's a number of FEMA cross-sections. And, uh, the French River is well pro- pro- profiled, so I'd be interested to see how they updated and changed that elevation.
Would, how many, I don't know if you know, but like, what percentage of traffic to the store is pedestrian-based rather than car-based, do you know?
Uh, the vast majority is definitely car-based, that, the vast, vast majority.
You don't have very many pedestrians that walk to the.
No, I think there, I think there's, I think there's like two individuals that live near that are there first thing in the morning, and they walk over. Um, but I, I've never been brought to my attention that I see many people walking in or out, uh, everyone's going through the, the parking lot.
What's the sidewalk network like in that area, is it adequate to?
I don't think there is any.
No, there is sidewalk, no.
So you don't encourage people to walk?
I mean, I, I wouldn't want to walk on that road in, in general, just to make sure it is. But I mean, I think the good thing here is the, the vast majority of people are utilizing it, um, we're getting a lot of, it's mostly repeat individuals coming back, so. Um, they, they understand where it is, or if people are probably using Drafters before, you know, we are still getting a decent amount of people coming from Connecticut. Um, even with them going recreational, we still have a high uptick of Connecticut residents coming in. Um, my understanding is we haven't had any issues concerning traffic or accidents or anything, one knows coming from the facility. Um, and I think that's a good thing with, you know, our employees, and our employees talk to these customers, um, especially the ones from Connecticut, they, they're always told about not, you know, listen, it's legal here. You know, if you're going over state lines, we're not telling you to do that, because it's technically federally illegal. Um, but we have, you know, the stop, the stop with signs on both exits. Um, or, you know, like, I think we brought up last time, but the numbers matched up, or the average customer coming through there is in their, um, low to mid-fifties. Um, you know, it's not twenty and thirty-year-olds, it's individuals coming in that probably dabbled in this in the seventies and. Um, they want clean product, I mean, they want to make sure they're getting something that doesn't have fentanyl on it. And, you know, I know that's kind of a, a taboo word, but listen, I'm in Dudley dish court every day, and I can tell you that. People get put on drug-free screens, they come in testing positive fentanyl, and the first thing they say is, listen, all I do is smoke weed. And the judge looks at them and goes, you're buying on the streets and it's being laced with stuff, and that's why you're testing positive, so. These blue collar, white collar individuals coming in know what they're getting, um, and if they come in and say, listen, I have anxiety or I can't sleep. Uh, the budtenders in that can say, hey, listen, you should try this. Um, for a long period of time, the number one sellers were all these things that help people sleep. Um, that was, when we first opened up, I think for the first four or five months, um, that was the number one seller, people coming in saying, I just need something that can help me sleep, and those, we couldn't keep those things on, in stock. A lot of, a lot of, um, pickup orders now, you know, the, not like the express, so they order it online, come in, show their I Ds, go to the window, just pick it up and they're, they're, they're up right back out. Um, so there's a lot of turnaround, you know, we're not promoting anyone to stay inside there for very long, um, and no one has, I mean, they're in and out. Um, and I, I think, like I said, you're seeing on the weekends, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, somewhere close to three hundred customers. Um, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the slower days, you know, around one seventy to two hundred, and with the parking lot, everything's been able to handle that.
Uh, one more question about, you said, you brought up clean butt, um, if you guys do bring in that well, are you going to have like a P F O S filter, if you have P F O S?
We would have to have a, a, um, a filtration system put in there, and I know that was one of the questions that we knew was going to get brought up. Um, so we would have to make sure the water's clean, not only just because, one, it's also going through the discharge and going across into Webster's, um, area, so the water gets tested, because I believe it's. Has too much P F Is in there, Dudley gets charged a fee or something along those lines, I don't know the exact details, but there's something along that line. But the state also does check for it when it gets sent to the lab, so we have to make sure that none of that's in there.
Check for P F O S?
They check, it's not exactly P F Is, but my understanding is if it has too much in there, it checks off for something else. And with the new, the labs are the C C C's new focus. Um, so there's been a lot more stuff that's been coming in, you know, they call it hot, it's been testing for things that it previously wasn't testing, um, for. But I just want to make it clear again, if we are told that we can pull the water from the town, that would be our number one focus.
That's what I got out of that.
I certainly want to pull the water from the town. Um, because we have pumping stations right near us, you know, we know that we'd have a good flow. Um, I understand that obviously, look at the Stevens Mill Project, when it comes on, it's going to be pulling a lot of water, so. Um, if there's a way for us to say, here's a number we're going to be utilizing, can the infrastructure do it? We would, we would love to do it, um, we'd pay the full water and sewer on it, rather than just the sewer portion for the discharge. I mean, in, in full transparency, the well was a phone call idea when we were trying to figure it out, and I said, we're close to the river, can we put a well down? And I think two weeks later, they called back and said, we should try it.
Oh, it's in the aquifer, the protection zone.
It's, yeah, I think it's on like the sec, there's different aquifer zones, so we went and looked at that, um, to make sure we could put down a well at first. Um, and then that's why when we brought that information, not only to conservation, but we had to disclose it to D E P, we told, I, I can't remember what the exact aquifer area is, but. That one does allow for well use, I believe, for like cultivation use or anything that's going into product itself. Due to the employees, if we use it as pot water, we would have to be a, um, you know, water source, for example, but the. Any water that would be pulled from that well would just be going into the, the cultivation facility itself. But, once again, if we can pull ten thousand gallons off the town, we would, that would be our number one thing, we wouldn't have to pay money for a well. Um, we would still have to put our own filtration, and again, just to make sure the water's getting cleaned out. And there's a lot of reuse of water, um, so we'll go through a filtration system again, just to make sure that it's clean going back into the plant.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, we have a requirement in the zoning bylaw that a marijuana establishment submit a written report to the board annually about their activities. We did get such a report, I was wondering if anybody had any questions or comments for, for Mr. Adamopoulos?
At this point, and, and I, I would suspect you're probably well aware of that in terms of the Dudley zoning bylaws required by January thirty-first.
It was brought to my attention, and I do apologize, that was my fault, I was not aware of it, and I will make sure we're here before January thirty-first in two thousand twenty-four.
We'll put you on the dance card then.
I will reach out the bill well before that, so we can be on there. Now, now, I, I do apologize, that was my fault, when we did file it, I said this, you know, if we can do it at the same time, I'd love to do that.
And I, I agree to that.
Bill has, Bill's been great, Bill answers our questions that we send out, he's been great to deal with too. Um, sometimes I just have questions saying, you know, is this even allowable use in town, you know, what's the bylaw interpretation, and Bill gets back to us, so it's, it's great. Um, building inspector gets back to us all the time. But I also put all the licensing on there, so we did our renewals, we've got our three renewals back in January, and then we got the renewal from the health department also in January. On concern the retail space, once manufacturing gets up and running, we get a final license from the C C C, the health department will come back down, walk through it again.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Can I say a couple of things?
Sure.
Excellent. So this all got approved years ago, I think I was on the board, I might even have been chairman at that point in time, I don't really remember a whole hell of a lot of it, and I have had time to go back and look through my notes. Would it be possible for you to forward us the decision paperwork about when all this thing got approved? Because I've got about a thousand comments, but I'm thinking that probably nine hundred of them were cleared up at that point in time, and, uh, the other hundred probably don't have anything to do with these stupid pads. So if you could please forward me that, I'd appreciate it. Just for general knowledge, floodplain, is that under planning board, or is that conservation commission, who, who deals with the floodplain?
Uh, primarily the building commissioner.
So any concerns that we may or might not have are not relevant here, or?
Well, we certainly want, you know, as I mentioned, or as I asked Frank, uh, were there any concerns about the floodplain, if there are, he should note that on his building plans to the, to the building commissioner.
Well, it's kind of hard to have any concerns when we don't know where the floodplain is, it's not shown on any of the drawings.
It's shown on, uh.
We're being told that it's an elevation, but I'm not clear if the floodplain goes by FEMA by a line, or is by just an elevation, that we have to connect the dots, so I'm kind of unclear about that as well.
No, no, uh, if I may, it, it was shown, shown on sheet C, C one of the submitted documents to you.
I have the copy of the plan.
I, you forwarded everything to us, I looked through everything, I just.
Just see on the back, the back portion of that building is not on, it's not leveled.
I think you've said that four or five times, I'm just trying to get through this pretty quick here. So I'm just trying to figure out, we're looking at this plan now about the, about these pads, and I'm not clear which pads we're looking for, there's about six pads around one building, there's four gray pads around another building that may or may not be part of this. I'm trying to figure out what, what we need to approve. And what's in the floodplain, and then.
The pads around building six.
Just the ones around building six, and what are the ones around the buildings that are up the upper right?
Those are existing, correct?
No, those, those are not existing, those, those are the ones that I thought was part of the application.
For cultivation, correct?
Yeah, so the, um, the, these were simply a, another, um, dumpster compactor pad, and then another external tank pad.
For cultivation.
For cultivation, correct.
Which we're not here for today, so it'd just be the, it would just be the pads.
Put it shown on the plan, right?
Sorry?
Put it shown on the plan, right?
Yes.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm going at, what I can see right now.
Okay, so we'll ask for approval of the plan as it is before the board.
So you're looking for approval of the plan as it is?
As it is before the board, yes.
With the two that may or may not be in the floodplain up top?
I would ask for approval of the plan as before the board. That's what we're asking for approval of, submitted to the board is what we're asking for to be approved.
I would approve building six and then the others as a different story.
No, we just heard that the plan.
As is.
Right, which means that these are new.
Are new.
Right. So what building is it?
If those, if those two pads are going to be an issue, and we could get approval of the ones around building six, I would just ask for the approval around building six at this time, as the other two are going to be primarily utilized for the cultivation project. I'm not trying to hold up potentially moving forward the manufacturing if those two pads at the top right sector would ultimately hinder this being put to a vote. So we would, we would, ultimately at this point, the focus would be on building six, um, because that's the manufacturing building.
So one of the pads is for a generator, for a, a temporary generator for future use?
Uh, building six, yes.
Is that a diesel or gas-powered?
That would be a portable generator, so it would be a diesel.
Diesel.
Uh, it will not be, they're, they're not proposing to mount, to have a generator there all the time. So it would be in, in, in the event of a sustained power outage, it would probably be like a sun rental gen- generator, bring one, one in.
And we need that for C C C approval, we have to show that we'd have something that could at least have the facility running in case there's a blackout. The, the security system is being run by a generator that's in between building six and the other ones, that at least keep these security systems up and running.
So if you have a generator that's diesel-powered, usually it has some kind of a tank associated with it, it has all kinds of safety features. When you have a temporary generator set up, there's going to be some kind of a gas line or diesel line between a tank and the generator. So to me, it's important to where that is, because you're showing a bunch of vegetation and grass there. And if there's gonna be a, a tank set up someplace in the grass area, and then the rest of it's all gravel, if I'm not mistaken, which is, which is impervious. So any kind of a diesel spill would be going into, theoretically into the, the, into the river. Through the groundwater. And then as far as the HVAC pads are concerned, are those all for air movement?
Those were, um, uh,
Trying to figure out if there's refrigerant flowing to them, or if they're just for heating without the refrigerant?
I have, um, acronyms unfortunately that I'm not, um, familiar with anymore.
What's the acronym?
MAU.
Make-up air unit.
And ACCU.
Okay, so MAU is a make-up air, what was the other one?
ACCU.
It's an air conditioner.
Yep, and then an, um, RTU, and then an ERU.
Roof pop unit.
Correct, so I guess what I was trying, the reason I'm asking the question is because it might, I would prefer to see anything that has refrigerant and where you're this close to the river to be on top of the roof. I know that you said that it was not feasible, but I would say that anything's feasible is probably not cost prohibitive, it probably, it's probably cost prohibitive though. I'm assuming these buildings aren't set up for the weight?
Are they set up for the weight, is that the question?
Yep.
I'm, I'm not positive.
Yeah, well, just the statement was that they're not, it's not feasible, but I mean, it's feasible, you can, you can beef up anything if you want to, but just cost.
Well, we were at one point told that to try to not put things on top of the buildings, because it would make the site unseemly to the neighbors, so.
Was that a comment from the board or from somebody else?
There's a comment from, when we had to go before ZBA, it was brought to them, and that's why we ultimately had to make it all.
So we don't have any jurisdiction, so we're, we're talking about a lot of areas we don't have any jurisdiction for, right?
I'm sorry?
I'm just, this is a comment from the board. Not for you, it just, it just.
Me being a little bit facetious that. Well, we, we did get a variance for building one, which is the, the mill building. Anything that we were gonna put on top of that building was gonna at least match the height of everything around it. We did not get a variance for putting anything on top of building six at the time, because I don't think there was a proposal to put any sort of systems on that, that building. Building six is just a, it's a newer building compared to the old mill. And it's a, you know, it's not one of those old strong mill type buildings, it's a, it's a steel building with. So, um, I'm assuming the weight bearing on that's probably substantially lighter than what the mill was. And we've, we've already come into, you know, issues with the existing roof that was on there and things like that with the, you know, going through our first winter of being open. So we're trying to address any sort of leakage and things coming in from that way.
And all these units around building six are feeding building six?
Yes, yes. The back portion of building six?
Correct, yes.
Yes, both two thirds of it.
So just in general, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members, I don't have any issues with the pads around building six. I would like to see some of them on the roof if possible, based on the, the refrigerant. I know the refrigerant lines are usually double walled, so that they are, um, they have the level of safety built into them. But I'm not sure if that's under our jurisdiction or not. I do have issues with the gravel parking lots, but that might have been dealt with at a, either last time that we talked about this, or it may not be in our, under our jurisdiction. But as far as the pads are concerned, I don't, around building six? I don't have any concerns with them right now.
So these, these pads are gonna be constructed lower than the floor level of the building six?
These pads would be constructed at, yeah, so the, I will zoom in, look down on this area. The pads that are in the gravel parking lot, the small one, and then the, the long, long, long one are at, um, approximate elevation around four eleven, four twelve, uh, four ten. So those are, those are below the elevator, the finished floor of the building, because of the way the gravel, gravel park, parking slopes, but well above the floodplain.
Okay.
Elevation.
And, and the same?
As, as we head down, the, uh, these two are at elevation, um, the top of the pads are at elevation four ten, four ten and a half, top of pad elevation of, of four eleven. So, uh, those are, again, well above the floodplain elevation.
The ones in the back?
And then the generator pad is at four ten. And this, uh, tank storage pad is at four oh nine and a half. So they're all, um, at least a foot above the floodplain elevation.
What's the tank storage pad for? What is that?
Tank storage pad was an ethanol tank, uh, excuse me, was an, yes, it was a concrete ethanol pad.
And the one that you had, um, in the dotted area, that's the trash compactor?
Trash compactor and loading dock, so the loading dock is at, um, is at finished floor elevation. And then the, the trash, trash compactor would be a pad at grade, and then mechanical equipment up to finished floor elevation.
Okay.
What's the function of building six? What goes?
Not the retail portion, but the rest of it, the back portion?
Back portion is manufacturing.
It's gonna be manufacturing.
Are you changing any lighting for these pads?
Nothing that was changed from the previous app, application. All the lighting that I've shown on, on, on the plan was it was what was previously approved by.
Exterior lighting?
Yeah.
Yeah. Exterior lighting, yes.
I don't believe there'd be any additional, um, lighting utilized for this.
Okay.
Um, I think the only changes we may have to the exterior, like additions to the exterior of the building would just be additional, um, cameras, you know, under what the CCC would require going towards the backend now, since we'd be utilizing that building.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No, nothing from the audience.
Anything from the audience?
Steve Wachrowa, Lawrence Road in Dudley. I just had a couple, I actually, not here for this, but I couldn't help but make a couple of notes here.
Steve, come up to the microphone, please.
Please. All right, I'll talk, get to, does that one work?
Probably.
The ones at the table work.
Is this microphone, yeah?
Yep.
So my, my first question for the board, because I think we might have a board member or two who might be able to answer this. Is it really that unusual for a developer to have to pay for improvements to infrastructure around a, a project? That is not in the project, in other words, in a city or town, is it, is it that unusual?
Depends on the size of the prod, of the project and the willingness of the party. I mean, I've seen, we've, I think, we've seen it for Stevens Mill, where they're, they're talking about some traffic, um, crosswalks and everything.
Right, right.
Seen it in areas, I mean, you can look at, um, in Charleston where Amazon is, they're gonna have all kinds of changes there. So there's, there's, there are exceptions, but to the point of the team here, I mean, that's, that's a lot of work.
I'm, I'm just kinda surprised that there's this sudden awareness that there's not enough capacity for water, that this wasn't like worked out ahead of time. Because, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, as you just mentioned, you actually have very good memory, you were the chair.
Were.
And I was sitting where you are. And I remember we had the discussion about water, and we had concerns, we talked about, it sounded like a big number at the time, you know, how, how many thousands of gallons a day. And I remember I even asked at one point, you know, could you draft from the river? And it was explained to me that because of the regulations regarding marijuana cultivation and everything, you can't use river water. But when I, uh, talked a little bit more about that, I remember at one point, it was stated that if need be, you guys would truck the water in for this operation. So why can't you truck the water in if it's not gonna work out?
We would truck the water, the, I believe the answer to that was we would truck the water in if there was some sort of electrical issue of the water, was it down water pipe or something along those lines for a short term period of time?
For a short print, all right, lie down, hold on, because I'm gonna go back and I wanna look at that meeting.
Okay.
Because I'm, I don't recall it that way, but I could be mistaken, I'm getting kinda old.
I mean, we were told by, at the meeting about infrastructure uploads, it wasn't just running the pipe down the road to our facility, it was also running it down Chase Avenue around Schofield.
Right, but if trucking it was a feasible option, then it wouldn't really make a difference.
CHP water also, right? Not just cultivation? Which, which, combined heat power, like what, what, what that?
Well, we were talking, when we talked, when we got our first special permit, it was just for cultivation purposes. We would not be trucking in water to this facility unless we couldn't utilize, if there was a down, um, pipe or if we couldn't use the well. We just, we just wouldn't be doing that, it'd just be, it'd be the same thing of having to bring on a generator in case of emergency to make sure the project can keep moving forward, we could water the flowers. You know, with the price points of how this market has changed, we have to be, we have to look at what the costs are and how to make this work. You know, two years before COVID hit, the cultivators were making hand over fist. If you look out west, markets that are not regulated like Massachusetts is, there are businesses that are just walking away from facilities. And we're just lucky that Massachusetts has regulations in place to make sure that there's caps on certain things, and that these big businesses haven't been growing, you know, hundreds of thousands of square feet of flower that they can't sell. To make this project work in this area, we have to, you know, propose a new way of ultimately growing it, which we would come back to in the future, once we can address this water issue. But also to make sure that we can find a way that's sustainable to make sure we're not going over any budgets that we have to put in place.
So is it fair to say that back then, when you could make money hand over fist with marijuana, that then it might have been feasible to pay for trucking of water in?
I don't think we would have, I, I, your recollection may be much different than mine. I, I would assume that we said we were gonna truck in water if there was an emergency and we had to keep the plants watered. If you don't feed water into those plants on a daily basis, you're gonna lose an entire crop, and you're talking about a large sum of money. To have a water tanker have to come down there every day, um, I just, I, I don't recall promising that, or if that was even something that we would even consider. It's just, at that time, we had had sit downs with, um, numerous individuals from the water department, and we were never told that we couldn't utilize water. Now, with a number that's drastically smaller than anything that we've ever proposed, um, we're just hearing that now we're just trying to bypass paying fees to the town.
So the town well is on Schofield Ave?
It is, that's where they wanted us to.
So it's pretty, pretty close proximity to, to this location. So do you know whether or not this well would actually be in the aquifer for the town's well?
It is in a zone, I can't remember the exact name of the zone that it's in. There's two, there's two circles that come on the, the town map that you can see them in, we're in the second circle.
It's a zone two.
Which would allow for a well to be placed there for certain use. I know that Jeremy Hendricks pulled all the bylaws and all the state laws to make sure that we could actually place a well in there. But going back to the point, the only reason we proposed the well in the first place is because we were told that we couldn't utilize the existing infrastructure. If we were told at ten thousand gallons a day, which is not the number that was brought up at the January meeting, would not, would be feasible to that building and not require us to try to find another water source, we would come back to you with a plan that has the greenhouse on the back, no well, and we would say, we're running the pipes around. This way we're moving the hydrants around so that, um, we can put these buildings up, and, um, we're gonna be utilizing town water and sewer.
Mr. Chairman, my last comment is, uh, I'm, I'm, I'd like to thank these gentlemen for being here to, to address some of the rumors that are flying around. And I actually heard another rumor, and maybe they can confirm or deny this, that there's actually a problem with not enough electricity at this location. In fact, I had heard that at one point, there was gonna be an application coming forward for a, uh, natural gas power plant to actually provide the power for onsite. So I'm just wondering about, is it, is it gonna be a situation where this concrete generator pad is actually going to be utilized for this generator that I heard about? Or is there a possibility that this generator isn't gonna be a standby for power loss only? And that it's actually gonna be running more often?
No, at one point, just to address that, at one point, we had discussion, informal discussion with the town, putting a CHP system on the opposite end of the drafter side of the building. That was when the entire inside of the building was gonna be renovated, and the grow was gonna go in there. That was gonna pull from the existing, um, natural gas line that National Grid has on that part of the building. And we were going to ultimately be a source of energy not only for that property, but we were also going to give the town the option of using it as an emergency source of electricity, in case there was some sort of catastrophic event in the town. Based upon going to the greenhouse model, the energy, um, use would dramatically change in having this fully inside the enclosed building. So the CHP system is no longer a necessary, um, item. And that pad right there is being proposed for an emergency situation in case building six went down, so we could keep the operations going. But for building six right now, there's sufficient energy on there. We've been in contact with National Grid concerning energy for the greenhouses. And there's no need any longer for a proposed CHP. I believe that at one point, we had had a plan with it all drawn up, I think we actually had promoted it for coming forward. And then that was maybe in the fall time, and the lender reached out to us and had done analysis of the market and said, we need to have a talk. So we have, we have individuals that we have to account to, um, including investors and lenders. And, um, a lot of these investors in here are individuals that are well aware of the marijuana industry, not just here in Massachusetts, but across the country. And when their other states are having issues, they start doing cost analysis of how that may impact here, you know, a year or so down the road. So there's no energy issue concerning building six, or if we come back concerning the, um, cultivation with, with greenhouse apparatuses.
All right, great, that was all I had, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so. Oh, oh, sorry.
How you doing? I'm John, I live, uh, on Office Hill Road, uh, right before the corner, the shop corner on Chase Ave, uh, turns. I'm having problems with my water now. You fill up the tub, water's brown, I get new water heaters. It's happened, happened in the last six months, I wanna say, intermittently. Pretty much since they started doing work on the well on Schofield Ave, they put a big tank there, they were doing some construction there. Ever since that started, I've had problems with my water. My grandkids can't even take a bath, it looks like iced tea, and it's not the water heaters. And there's also a project further down, behind the gas station, there's a water project going on. I don't know if that, both of those things are related. But, um, more, more usage of the water from the town until this is remedied is, I, I don't think that's, unless I just got a quirky situation going on.
Have you notified the water department?
Uh, I've contacted, uh, I started to, um, and I got, it was fine, it was on Facebook, I believe. My wife, uh, looked into it a couple times, and they were telling people that it was fine to drink, and it's just, uh, sediment moving around and from construction, and it should clear up. So that's A, concern. B, I thought we were here to look at the building that's being proposed, not just the pads. And, uh, questions relating to construction traffic. That, that road is a horrible road, where it turns, there's numerous accidents, uh, on Chase Ave as it turns the corner. It's a sharp, sharp corner. If the bridge was fixed, it would probably lay a lot of concerns of heavy equipment, you know, going around that corner and just in the front of the building in general. Might, might make sense to, I, I find it ironic that right before these people opened, the bridge got closed. This sounded like you closed it because you didn't want people from Connecticut coming down to this place. I've heard that from other people too, so, um, it's a great inconvenience, and if you did a traffic study, there's a problem with, it, it messes up traffic all through town. That was our main cut through for thirty years I've been living here, and it's a main cut through for everybody that lives in that neighborhood to go uphill street, go through, down their botlet, get on the highway, all the time, coming home, same thing. Now, you're gonna go around to Main Street, it clogs Main Street up, or you gotta go down by the mill, the back way, that little, they spent all this money on that one road that goes between, uh, right after Stevens Mill. It's like a cut through to get up the back way, they spent, it's beautiful. They can't fix the bridge on Hill Street?
I agree with you.
You're kidding me, right? I, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm kinda sick of all the stuff that's going on.
Yeah.
Dear Barley, I can't even, when I have to go to the.
Dear Barley, I can't even, when I have to go to the facility.
It's horrible. How come somebody can't get this in gear? I think the money, this, this company's donating money and, you know, they're paying revenue to the town. Somebody can't apportion some money to get these bridges done in a timely manner? This has been going on for a long time. And that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
I, I think we are fully in agreement with that. It's very depressing to hear that 10-year timeline that the planner referred to earlier. To think that this is gonna go on that much longer is really depressing.
10 years, yeah. I hate driving around too.
Look at the temporary bridge. We'll get the temporary bridge soon.
Temporary bridge soon, okay. Let's hope the temporary bridge is, is up to the task of 10 years and.
You've been hearing about this temporary bridge.
Unfortunately, I don't think that, we don't have much we can do about the bridge. Or do we really? I suspect that your water issue is, well, you're gonna have to deal with the water department, water and sewer folks. If we could help you, we would, but that's not in our purview.
Okay, I'll contact them.
Yeah, hopefully there'll be some solution.
Alright, so the only matter before us tonight is the pads around Building Six and whether we're gonna approve these or not. Okay, and now that we have had all the chance for public to speak, I'm gonna close the public hearing at,
Eight twenty-nine?
Eight twenty-nine, yeah. Let's call it eight twenty-nine. And, yeah, it's.
It's not gonna be any more construction, alright? Like what he was worried about?
Just the, just the pads?
Yeah, nothing big.
Light, light construction.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, like I said, we're not, we're not proposing any additions to the building or anything along those lines. The, any construction should be very, very low compared to when we were doing the actual demolition inside the building and the parking lot.
There are a few other minor changes to the plan. In fact, do you wanna go over those quickly?
So was there been part of the public hearing?
Yes, it's on the site plan.
Okay, so we should not have closed the public hearing until we had all of these.
Right.
We're sorry?
Sorry?
We, it had been a little premature.
I have been carrying through utility improvements to the building. Sewer connections which may have had more to do with cultivation in Building One, in the, the buildings. Building One, Seven, Eight, and Nine, if we're, as well as some water main improvements wrapping around the building. The existing water main fire service actually cuts through the demolished building and then ties into hydrants in this.
Public hearing is closed, but these were on, these were on the list of things that we're supposed to vote on?
Yes, there were some other changes to the site plan.
But they haven't gone over them yet.
Correct.
Alright, so we're gonna have to reopen the public hearing.
Right, I think you should, yeah.
Okay.
So at six thirty, excuse me, eight thirty, we'll reopen the public hearing.
So yes, the, the site plan didn't include utility improvements around the building. They included water and sewer service connections going through Building One. And it also included a routing of the water main around the pavement and around the rear of the building for fi- fire service to connect the hydrants at the rear of the property. With final locations of those to be coordinated with the fire department. The existing fire service line to the hydrants at the rear of the building ran through the existing building. So we wanted to get that remedied.
And fire, we did have the fire department come out. The hydrants are kinda clustered in the middle of that light gray area.
Yes, so there's, there's two existing kind of grass areas. Grassed, more just hydrant, scrubby gravel areas with hydrants and control valves. Position indicator valves in here and in, in here. And that water, that fire service ran through the existing building, came over through the existing limits of the demolished building and then up into these locations as well as serving a hydrant at, at the rear of the parcel here. So the utility plans have a layout to wrap that fire service around the building through the existing pavement.
So you're saying there's already a fire hydrant there, just unhooked? When you demoed it?
Correct. One, one I believe was demoed. It was actually within, there was a hydrant inside of the limits of the existing building. There's kind of an open area and there was a hydrant in, in there. But right now, the hydrants are currently live.
There's, yeah, so it says existing pavement. There's hydrants in those currently. And I believe there's one on the back portion towards.
Towards the rear of Building Eight.
So we, I believe our proposal is to take where the existing two pavement ones are and move those back towards the French River area.
Correct.
And that would also give a wider egress area for the fire trucks if they ever had to come behind the building because that would open up space over there. I do know that the chief and I believe his lieutenant came and we blocked the property and he ultimately said that they would identify the areas where they should be placed. Moving the.
Has he identified the areas? Have you got that on paper from him?
I don't. Did he tell us exactly where to put them?
Not exactly, no.
So it's not in your design aspect?
The design aspect is that the, the number of hydrants that they wanted are out there. The exact location is not a hundred percent laid out yet.
The reason for running the pipe around the building was, there was a fear that the pipe ever broke and there had to be an emergency to try to fix that. That having it run through the building would be a huge impediment to have anybody from even the town have access to get the pipe fixed due to the age of the pipe. So when the water, when we went with the fire chief, he was very happy that I'd do it because it'd be a newer pipe and it would also be safer to make sure that if there was any sort of issue, it could be dealt with much cleaner and easier than the existing apartment because it actually goes right underneath Building One. So if we, when we had to move it, there was talk, we were trying to work with fire of how to potentially handle the water situation when we'd have to move them. One of the proposals was to have a fire truck onsite during the period of time where the water would be shut off to the facility. So that, there could be the connection points for the pipes at that time. And the fire department did say that we would be able to coordinate with them to make sure that they were there if that was the way of going forward, so that there was at least a water source in case something happened during that brief period of time. Obviously, that would be a cost that we would incur and pay for having the detail there for that.
Was there any other work other than that?
Is there any work proposed about the entrance to the building?
And the entrance to Building Seven was getting an accessible sidewalk and entrance.
That's the green area?
That's the, this, this gray area in, in front of the, the accessible spaces.
Okay. That's for this phase, Phase Two?
But is that gonna be, that, that would be Phase Two?
Which would be cultivation.
Cultivation, yeah.
Alright, so the sidewalk's not included, just the piping and the pads?
Okay, okay.
Does Building Six have sprinklers?
Building Six does have sprinklers, yes.
Where are those tied into, not the back?
Those, those are tied into the back corner and that, that's gonna get adjusted as well.
So you'd be cutting off the sprinklers and everything by redoing that pipe?
So that's why we would need to have the detail there for that period of time. It would allow us to continue having the retail store open for that period of time.
How long is our fire department gonna sit there until you dig a new pipe around?
No, no, so all that work would be done and it'd be the period of time we had to do the connection. And have it done there. So they wouldn't be sitting there, you know, for a full day or two days. It'd just be for that period of time that we need to make sure the water was going.
Some number of hours.
Those, yeah, those, those happen relatively rapidly.
And the fire department was the one who brought up to us and said, this is how we could handle it. We'd be able to put, you know, a truck there to make sure of it. We would work with all the contractors to make sure that we knew approximately how long it would be. And we would also do it during a period of time where the fire department, you know, said this is when we would deem it to be the safest for the full town.
And where would you tap that main?
I'm sorry?
That main get tapped in front of your building?
Is the main getting tapped from our building?
Yes.
So you put a new main tap to our old main?
So there would be a new main tap to the, to, well, no, we would be utilizing all the existing water pipes on the property.
On the property?
No, no new taps on Chase Ave.
No new tapping?
And that's nothing else?
Yep, no, that's it, I think. Just wanted to be sure.
Did we talk about the sewer already? The sewer?
I had mentioned the sewer connections.
And what were those?
But that, that, that would have been for Phase Two of Building One. So nothing to do with Phase One, building six.
Phase One.
I'm just confused because I thought that we were only doing the pads and then it got increased to the fire line. And then I thought I heard something about sanitary. Then there was a sidewalk that was involved. I'm reading through Graves' letter and he's talking about, about, wait one second. Stormwater and that's a deep sump catch basins. So I'm just really confused what we're doing here right now.
There would be.
I have no idea what we're approving.
Repair to existing catch, catch basins in front of Building One.
Is that part of this, is that part of section, Phase One? Or Phase Two?
Well, he's proposing this parking lot. The other parking, parking lot, we're exposed.
Bill, can you just explain to us what the hell we're here for? I, I, now I'm just sure something about a parking lot? I thought the comment was made that we're talking about, we're talking about the, the, the equipment pads. A parking lot? So what are we here to prove?
You're asking for more parking spots, right?
There was some minor modifications.
Those are already striped on the, that was striped on the previous plan. We just aren't showing the stripes on the backend. The, the previous plan had.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, there were some other minor changes to the plan that I, you know, we wanna be clear on so that we know what we're approving.
Yeah.
So for tonight, all you need is Phase One, to the left. Or do you need that fire thing too?
We would be asking for at least the piping, right?
We'd need the water, yeah, the water main.
Water main.
The, the, the fire service around the building, yes.
I believe that's also a request from the fire department just because where the existing pavement is, it does condense the air for a truck to go around the back area of the property.
Yeah, but Graves' engineer says that you don't have a location on those new fire hydrants.
There are locations shown, but they've, final, whether, whether we move them, you know, whether they're going in that, that, that exact spot, five or 10 feet off, it doesn't significantly change the design.
Would you be, would you be willing to get approval from, ask the fire chief or the lieutenant to go back out and be agreeable to the exact locations before you put them in? Because I'd hate to see you put them in and then they.
Oh, well, we absolutely would not install the hydrants without, without their buy-in on a, on a location.
Okay, so they're gonna, they're gonna oversee the exact location?
We would have, we would have stakes in, in, in the ground where, where they're going and then if they, if they say move it, we would move it.
Okay. Alright, so we would be approving it based on the town of Dudley Fire Department's recommendation? Wherever they, wherever they deem fit to put the fire hydrants?
Yeah, I mean, we were almost positive it's gonna go back towards.
Towards the river.
Towards the river. We just don't know the exact spots. That's, the, I know the lieutenant when he came was very happy about making sure that the, that the trucks will have better access around the backend of the property. Bill, I'm sorry for being a stickler here, but I have an application for review of a site plan in front of me. That's from November twenty twenty-two. Is that what we're talking about now?
Well, that included the greenhouse plan, I believe, and that's been taken off the table?
That's what I'm trying to get at, is that we're here, we're here to approve something that we don't even have a proper application for right now, as far as I can tell. We don't have drawings for half of it, so I don't know what we've been doing for the past hour and a half. We filed an amended application. We filed an amended application in.
Yes.
We had it, we had it reposted in the paper due to the fact it was being changed and we filed an amended application with that, with those new plans. So the application, if I had it in front of me, would tell me what we're approving because no one seems to be able to do that yet, even though I've asked four times. So I don't know what we're here to approve. I don't know what the application is. I don't, I've looked at the plans this morning and I don't recall seeing any fire main loop around the whole place. How can we approve something that's not shown somehow?
Yeah, it is shown. Showing a sheet three point O. So, here's the water main that comes in the back. And they're also showing the, the.
We've got the details of the deep sump catch basin in front of me and none of the, none of the dimensions are shown correctly. So I don't know how anybody can prove that or if we're approving or if conservation's approving it or I, I don't know.
It's gone before conservation already, I believe.
Just getting to the point where you guys have booked everyone.
Do you wanna take some more time to, to review?
I just wanna know what we're approving. Conservation. If I, if I were to make a motion, I couldn't even make a motion right now. Can anybody here make a motion? Does anybody here know what we're approving? Well, I thought we were here for AC pads. So, I don't know how to solve this problem right now.
So I think we probably need a better description of what these pads are being proposed. If we could continue the hearing then, if you like, to get better clarification on what, what we're actually acting on. Is that agreeable?
The board wants, we can thoroughly vet those and represent.
Yeah, I think it would be a lot easier if we weren't talking about Phase One and Two or.
Yeah, need some definition.
So it's what we're gonna, what you want approval for now and then we can handle Phase Two or Three down the road when you get there?
Yeah, because the, the project narrative that I had is talks about exterior loading docks, concrete utility pads, addition of parking. It mentions existing activities and use limitation that doesn't allow stormwater recharge. It talks about de-watering. I'm not sure what's the deal with what the de-watering is needed for. I'm not sure what they're being, what's, what's being constructed for it. So I was under the impression that most of my questions have to do with the impervious, with the concrete and with the gravel. And if we're just talking about a couple of equipment pads, then my comments aren't relevant at this time. If we're talking about parking lots and expanding parking, then my comments would be relative. So I can't even comment correctly on the project right now because I just don't know what the heck's going on.
Alright, so we'll extend the public hearing until the next meeting, which is gonna be March.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. And if you could forward to us an exact list of what's affected, so that we know.
Can you do that, Frank?
Yes.
Okay.
And then that way there also, we can just have it run by Graves', Graves', our consultant town engineer, make sure that he's, he's touched on all these topics. Because I think with the plans changing multiple times, it's, you know, we've got comments from him on things that are no longer applicable and we have things that are not gonna be done.
Graves did review this new plan.
Okay.
We got a comment letter from him yesterday or earlier this week.
Okay, but if he gives us a new list of exactly what, what he would like voted on now, we can just run it by Graves and make sure that, that he's, he's had a look at everything and he's in agreement with it, then that's fine for us. So like Mr. Yeah, so like what Mr. Evans is saying, we, we're all on the same page. We don't wanna be trying to figure it out later.
Okay.
So we had reopened. So we had, we had reopened the public hearing. We're gonna continue it till the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda for this evening is a review of a preliminary plan for conventional residential subdivision. Sawmill Road LLC, map one thirteen lot sixty-five and thirty-five Sawmill Road. I think we were handed a two-page document with waiver requests.
Evening, everyone. Uh, for the record, I'll state my name again, Steve Watroba, twenty-two Lawrence Road, representing Sawmill Road LLC. So, um, I'll try and make this as short as possible. I know it's been a long night for everybody. Uh, last time I appeared before the board, you gentlemen all voted to approve my preliminary subdivision plan. And then I made a request that I wanted to get some votes on some of the waivers that I require to be able to move forward with the plan. And we had quite a discussion about that and, um, Bill and I had talked about it ahead of time, but unfortunately, as we all know, Bill wasn't able to be here at the last meeting. So we decided that I would come back tonight so that we could have the discussion again with Bill present on whether or not, uh, it would be uh, okay for me to request the vote on the waivers. I also pared down the list of waivers. Uh, last time I came before the board, we had gotten it down to ten. Uh, what I'm looking for tonight is six. I would need additional waivers at the definitive phase. Um, but these six are the important ones that I need. That gives me some, um, security as far as moving forward with the plan as we had discussed, building it the way that we had discussed.
Mr. Atroba, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we, didn't we discuss the, um, option that on the sidewalks, that in lieu of impervious sidewalks, that we would, that you would look at doing something impervious?
Exactly, and what, what I need though is I need a waiver from the bylaw for sidewalks because the bylaw for sidewalks would mean that I would have to build the sidewalks to the standard that would require the burms, the, um, the, the, all of the, basically to the standard that the town requires. As I had said at the last meeting, I'll reiterate it again, I do not have any problem with something that we could call a footpath. Something that would give the ability for the kids or whoever, living in the three houses at the end of the cul-de-sac, to be able to walk from that cul-de-sac out to the main road without having to walk on the paved drive, uh, road. So again, I reiterate that and I don't have any problem with you putting that as a condition. Um, you know, if you approve the waiver for the sidewalks, you can make it conditional that I will provide an alternative to the sidewalk that the board is satisfied with because I think Mr. Clark had expressed that he would be satisfied with something along the line of like a gravel. Something, you know, we don't want something muddy that they have to walk in, something that they can walk in that's not gonna be muddy.
Crushed stone or something to that effect.
Exact, I, crushed stone.
Basically, you're looking, you're looking for a waiver on the design of the sidewalk, not necessarily the sidewalks.
Design on the sidewalk, location of the sidewalk as opposed to having it directly.
Abutting the road.
Abutting the road because again, we talked about the country drainage. If we put a berm there, country drainage won't work.
So in lieu of a stipulation requiring, according to the subdivision rules regulation, the sidewalk, we would have a condition?
Sure, yeah, that, I, that's, I'm open to that.
All right, excuse me, perk test for country drainage?
No, uh, you know, uh, talked to the engineer and, uh, I'm not sure where that terminology, terminology came in, but, uh, the engineer tells me that a perk test is not used for, for that kind of a drainage system, so.
Pee pole test, I believe is what Graves called it. Pee pole.
Okay, but again, why would I?
Because you've got two lakes right there.
They're not right there. They're not right there.
They're pretty close. You got wetlands in the back too.
One hundred percent uplands, this property. This parcel that we're talking about, one hundred percent uplands.
You normally do a, a test for detention pond to make sure that it has adequate soil to accommodate that use.
Low impact subdevelopment with no drainage, you have to do a, you gotta make sure that soil drains into the ground within twenty-four to seventy-two hours.
I'm still gonna bring before the board in the definitive plan, a design that's gonna meet the satisfaction of the peer review of the town engineer.
And then the sidewalks being gravel, any sidewalk has to be A D D compliant for handicapped or anything, so if you're.
I thought we already, I thought we already hashed this all out. As a matter of fact, I remember the chairman at the last meeting, he said, let's take these one by one and get the board's opinion on this. And we went one by one through every one of these and the sidewalk waiver came up and you did not say anything at that time. And then it was a unanimous vote to approve my preliminary subdivision. So if we're gonna rehash it, we're gonna go back and now it's all of a sudden a problem, what are we doing here?
Sidewalks have been a problem since day one.
Yeah.
We brought it before with Ravine. You, you, you brought it, Ravine said the same exact thing, okay, now we know what you guys want, you want sidewalks. That was a big deal. He came back, no sidewalks, no sidewalks, no sidewalks.
Right, and as you had said, David, in your neighborhood, the kids walk right down the middle of the road and ignore the sidewalks.
Right, that's my neighborhood, but that was before complete streets. That was before we were obligated to, to create a path.
So my understanding is now, this evening, you're pro sidewalk?
My, I don't, I don't care about sidewalks. That's not my concern. My concern is country drainage, whether it's able to actually seep into the ground there.
So if I come here, if I come here with a definitive.
Not done?
Okay.
We're gonna have puddles going on to Sawmill Road, dripping down to your street, Lawrence Road, with a big icicle waterfall.
Mr. Chairman, through, through the chair, I would like to ask the town planner, would my definitive plan have to go through peer review?
Of course.
Okay, so what are we talking about here? If I bring in a definitive plan and it has drainage that shows water running out onto Sawmill Road or it shows that there's gonna be no feasibility for this drainage system that I'm trying to do, then your peer review, your engineer, pretty bright guy, is probably gonna say, there's no way that's gonna work. And then none of you are gonna approve my subdivision. I understand that. But I just think we're way ahead of that point. We're all making, well, not all of us, but some of us are just making the assumption that it might not work when we don't know yet.
Yeah, that's the whole problem. We don't know. We don't know if a countryside drainage.
So what are you giving up by, what are you giving up by approving these waivers tonight? If you still have the ability to tell me, hey, it's not gonna work.
I don't even have topography. I don't know if the water's gonna run off your road at the sawmill. I don't have anything.
Right, that's for the, that's for the engineer to figure out.
Problem, but you want waivers before the fact. Oh, boy. If I give you waivers, something changes and I'm stuck with the waivers.
Uh, he's not asking for a waiver from topography.
Well.
No, no, I'm not.
So you have the topography on the preliminary plan right now? What the road's going to be?
Yeah, I had, I had the prelim, do, do we have a copy?
No, that's the existing though. I'm talking about finished topography, like what your road's supposed to be, like.
Yeah, we discussed that. We discussed that I had.
Higher on the right side, going down to the.
We discussed that I had an email from Graves Engineering that, that your.
We discussed after this email that Tom, that Tom got a call from Graves and saying that in order to determine that if country drainage worked, he would need the topography.
Right, but he never said it had to be done before the preliminary.
It would be beneficial to you to have it for the, the preliminary, so you wouldn't be.
Right, in other words, that's a risk I'm taking.
Right, okay.
Right.
Well, if you need a swell, that swell has to go back to your own property, like if you dig a trench around your subdevelopment to keep the water deferment back to your property. You, you would have to have some kind of place to dump your own water.
Well, hopefully I'll have an engineer who can do that.
Build a detention, detention base.
Yeah, detention pond.
That's what they do at all.
They would have to have a perk test to make sure the water seeps in within twenty-four to seventy-eight hours.
If it doesn't, they'll dig it out and put septic system in.
Not if the, the land's already subdivided. It's gonna go back to his own property.
Can't subdivide the land until the definitive is approved. Hell, I can't even record that plan. They made sure that I took off this signature block. There's no signatures on it. As a matter of fact, quite frankly, the system's a little fraud, flawed because the subdivision regs say that one copy of the plan, upon approval of a preliminary subdivision, that one copy of the plan should be returned to the applicant. And I was mentioning this to the town planner. I said, why bother? You guys aren't signing it anyways. So it almost seems, it's like, they put the verbiage in there that one copy should be returned to me. That almost implies as if like there should be something on there, an official stamp or something, or some sort of approval that says, hey, we approved it. The only record of you approving my preliminary subdivision is the meeting. And, you know, the record, the recording from the meeting. But the recording from the meeting doesn't show what the plan looked like.
Yeah, just a bunch of lots and that was it.
Right. Exactly. Thank you. You're making my point.
So there will be a decision, a written decision, once we wrap up the, the project that you'll have. So you'll know then whether the plan is approved or not and which waivers have been approved or not.
Oh, okay.
And that'll be in writing.
All right, when, when does that?
Well, as soon as we, we, the board is finished with, uh, deciding what it wants to do.
Okay.
Then I'll write it up.
All right, but they took, they took a vote at the last meeting.
Yes.
And actually already approved it.
Right.
So that's.
Still have the open-ended matter of the waivers.
Right.
Right, but I, I, I just in the past, I don't ever remember us on any, any, it's not, it's, it's not typical that somebody brings in a preliminary plan. It's, it's permissible, but it's not typical. Typically, they bring in the definitive plan and then we go through what's gonna be okay and what's not gonna be okay. I can't ever remember voting on waivers on a preliminary plan.
Well, we did that for the Butler Way project, which subsequently was, was purchased by somebody else, so it never went forward, but we did it.
On the butter.
Yes, but we did do a written decision on, you know, that's my practice. Maybe previous town planners didn't.
But that's, but that was also the one that we, we, yeah, we, we talked about waivers and then the developer came back and instead of doing single, single homes on, single family homes on single lots, he was talking about doing all duplexes and that was never discussed in the preliminary, if I remember right.
They backtracked on that and.
Yeah, that did change. That, that was back and forth. There was some. There were issues with that, I think, that don't necessarily relate to the situation.
I came, I came on to the board after that preliminary was done and it was more into the, into the definitive plan, but. Yeah, okay, so prior to that, I don't ever remember that happening, so.
Yeah, I think the applicant is entitled to know how the board feels about the waivers. And whether, when he gets to the definitive plan, whether they'll be acceptable or not. Uh, that's the point of the preliminary plan is to work out, you know, all the issues surrounding the plan and make sure that he doesn't waste a lot of money drawing up definitive plans on schemes that won't be approved by the board.
All right, I mean, I, I have no problem with, with these, these waivers that he's asking for as long as he's in agreement to do something with, you know, what I, what we just spoke about, the impervious sidewalk, um, designs being changed to some kind of pervious design, that's fine, fine with me. As long as there's something there, I'm good.
I concur.
We could write it up, board, prove the waivers conditional upon documentation and the definitive plan that it meets.
Yeah, though, Bill, the, the definitive plan is really where the rubber hits the road. I mean, you know, all of the, the good intentions that we might have at this level now don't really necessarily come to fruition when we get to the definitive plan because as, I think it's been obvious here, there are still things that we'll get a peer review on, we'll get further information, we'll get clarification, so.
Well, there are some basic components like the right of way width and the pavement.
Yeah, I, I.
I think if you decide at definitive plan that you wouldn't approve it, then I think he should know that.
All right, well, I, I would say then, if I'm not speaking out of terms, Mr. Chairman, then I would go along with these. It's tentatively acceptable and, you know, based, pending further clarification.
Yeah, but if you waive the burms, how, how are you gonna do if the next person comes and waves the burms?
Who's the next person?
Whoever wants to do a subdevelopment says you guys wave the burms.
Well, this, this subdivision has certain characteristics that most subdivisions don't have. One, it's very small, five, five lots, two of which that are have frontage already. The, the three lots that are being created on the cul-de-sac are gonna be, from what I understood from you was, is it gonna be, it's gonna be a, a private way, never to be taken by the town, so you're gonna put that in the deeds on the properties when they're sold that they, that can never come back to the town as being a, uh, public way. It's gonna be a private way in perpetuity and the people that buy those three properties are gonna have to pay to maintain that private way. So right there, that's a big, that's a big win for the town. They're not taking care of it, but yet they're gonna collect taxes on it.
Not really, because if they bring it towards the town in the future.
They can't.
Do it, they want them complete streets.
They can't. If it's deed restricted, they can't bring it to the town. How about those, those two in the front, are you gonna have that same, what he just said, that same thing? For when they buy it? Are they gonna be responsible for that road too? If there are driveways on that one?
One of those is gonna be an A and R lot. The other one will be an A and R lot once the definitive is approved.
Right, but are they gonna be, so they're not gonna have that same, they, they won't have to worry about the road?
They'll have a temporary easement when the road is being built so that their driveway, because we wanna try and have their driveways on the new private way as opposed to.
All five lots will have a driveway on private way.
Hey, that's something for my attorney to work out. I think you guys are going a little above your price.
So you have to be.
Pay grade there.
You would have to deed restrict all five properties.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right, but as far as, do they pay the same as the people in the back? You know, that would be something for, hey, you know what? If anybody doesn't like the deed restriction on the property, here's an idea. Don't buy it from me. Don't have me build a house for you. How's that?
I was just asking if you're gonna deed those ones out like those three at the top too?
Yeah, it's gonna have to be because we're trying to put the driveways onto that road.
Yeah, and I think they would have to all be equally the same, so if, if, if there's gonna be a, a homeowner's association to take care of the roadway, it would be split five ways instead of three.
But there is a homeowner's association.
There would be.
Why would you establish a homeowner's association for a property that I can't even get out of the preliminary phase at this point?
But that can be part of, that can be part of, on the definitive plan, that can be part of it, that it's gotta be a homeowner's association and that roadway's gonna be in perpetuity between it.
Yeah, that could be in the covenant. I got no problem with that. Problem solved.
So just in general, I'm having issues with the idea that we're making decisions and putting written decisions together on plans that aren't definitive. I may have done it in the past. I don't understand why. I understand the group that was here earlier, that what we saw was a colored plan that showed nothing and they had a set of plans that had more information in there. So in theory, with this, with the set of plans that were well thought out and engineered, we knew how big each one of those transformer pads were. We knew where the elevation were. There wasn't a lot of gray area. On the little plan they were showing us, there was nothing on it. They could have shown us a, a, a transformer pad that was five by five and come back with one that's fifty by fifty. And if we, well, why? Well, we couldn't do it any other way. What kind of fallback do we have if we don't have documents that we can actually fall back on? So, and doing anything between, before the definitive plan, to me is, is, is nothing. It's, it's senseless.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may.
I'm still talking, please.
Oh, all right.
So as far as, as far as this project is concerned, I understand what Mr. Matroba is, is coming from and what he's looking for. And I don't have an issue with giving some kind of a approval on most of these. But for example, we have, in my opinion, three that are tied together. Sidewalks, the burms and the width of the, of the private way. Let's assume, for example, that the country drainage doesn't work for some reason. We have to come up with some different kind of system. We don't have any kind of a width for this path. We don't know where the path is gonna be yet. Let's say that everything's sloped one way and we're assuming that the path is gonna be on the dry side, but that's not gonna work somehow with the dimensions. So now the path is in the, in the low side where everything's draining to and could, we don't have a perk test, we don't know if that's gonna work or not. There's no burms. If the perk test isn't gonna work or if we're not gonna use country drainage, we already waived the burms. Now we're gonna have a way there with no, with no burms on it? They're all tied together, so how can we sit here and make any kind of decisions in written format if we don't have anything to look at? Anything to base that on? So I'm, I'm a hundred percent okay with everything you've got here. And when the, if, when the engineering comes back and everything is as discussed and if all the engineering works out fine, how can there possibly be a problem? Now, if you come back and you show a, 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 a stone dust path that's a foot and a half wide, okay, no one's gonna walk on a foot and a half wide, so that's just the common sense law. But how can we put that into a decision if we don't have any drawings to refer to? I don't understand.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you know, my response to that is that's exactly your out though. If I come back with a definitive plan that shows a foot and a half wide stone dust pass, path, it doesn't matter about whether you granted a waiver for sidewalks or not. That's still not gonna meet the qualifications of what Mr. Clark has made a recommendation of. of being in the plan. So, you can shoot down my definitive plan. All I'm saying is, without granting any of these waivers now, the preliminary process is almost worthless. It has no teeth whatsoever. I can come back in the 11th hour, I could literally do everything that we discussed about doing, and if three out of the five board members decide that they no longer support it, because, I don't know, maybe the pitchfork brigade comes in in the ninth hour and starts screaming, and everybody gets upset and emotional, or something else happens, who knows? I've got no cover, I've got no-
Understood.
Protection.
I would respond to that, is that you're asking us to trust your engineering team and your design team, that they're gonna do what the board intends, even though it's not showing like that in plan. So, there's an element of trust there. But you're not, we're asking you to trust us. Hey, as long as the engineering is fine, I've got no problems with this. I'm giving my word, but you're not accepting, you're not taking, you're not trusting us in the same thing, so I mean, it has to be reciprocal here. Either we're going to trust each other that, hey, if I vote, if I say right now, hey, I don't have any problems with this, as long as engineering works out, that's my word.
Dan, I need to hear that from three members out of the five before I-
If that's what you need, okay, but I-
I'm hearing it from you, I've heard it from you the last meeting, I've heard it from you-
I don't wanna vote on a waiver without anything.
But that's not the same thing as what Dan's saying.
Like this, yeah, well, if it doesn't work out, then you're gonna lock us into that waivers. You're gonna go right to your lawyer and say, no, they gave me the waivers, now you're denying me.
Well, all right, so-
It's not my problem.
It's clear, it's clear we're not comfortable with, it's clear we're not comfortable with voting on the waivers tonight, and if, I see I've got three members that aren't comfortable, minimum, so, even if we put it to a vote, they're gonna fail, so let's-
Well, I can't give you a waiver on something I'm not looking at.
So, let's forget about that, let's talk about what Mr. Edmiston had said, and the way he said it. Do I have those assurances from the other board members?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know, because I don't look at it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, as I just said, I don't have a problem with any of this, as long as engineering works out, as long as that, you know, what the board has said as their desires are met, is to an extent possible.
Not to interrupt you, but I am comfortable with what you've said so far. I don't know how much further you're going with it.
I guess my ask would be, you know, if I'm comfortable doing that, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you were the board, comfortable in the same thing, or?
Is everybody comfortable with this as it's written, and what we discussed? Yes, but are we willing to vote on it and put it down, vote on it and put it in writing? Not yet, until we see what you're gonna come back with.
Right, but if I come back, and the engineering works, and I show a definitive plan-
Right.
-that shows that, here's country drainage, it will work. It's not gonna create a big problem with water runoff, it's not going to, you know-
Steve, you don't have to sell it to us. If Jeff Walsh is agreeable to it, and it, and he says it works-
It works.
We're gonna give it to you. We're not gonna, we're not gonna create any problems for you.
Okay.
I mean, if your engineer can put something on paper, and Jeff Walsh can review it and look at it and say, yes, it's gonna work, or he agrees, or if he comes back and says, well, I think you got it 80% of the way, and you gotta do something different to get the other 20%, that's between you, your engineer, and him. And once you get it to where he's happy, we're happy.
And, Mr. Chairman, you speak for-
I'm speaking for myself, but-
Correct.
I would concur with the chairman.
Well, there's three, so-
I'd like to make a motion to waive the open space requirement.
No seconds?
Nope.
I think the sense of where we are, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is that we're-
I appreciate the spirit.
Defer as far as any motions with regards to specific waivers at this point.
Problem is, David, if somebody seconds it, and then it fails, then I've got a bigger problem, because then I'm gonna bring it back later anyways, so, we might as well just wait on all of them.
Yeah.
Again, like I said, if this is a private way, and it's gonna be, you know, privately maintained by homeowners association of the five houses that are being built around this small cul-de-sac, I mean, I don't think you need a open space playground. I mean, we have a subdivision with, how many are going in at Lyons Estates? 18 lots or 19 lots? There's no open space there, my road is nine lots, there's no open space there, I mean-
Well, the space is only gonna three years, I don't know by it.
So, I understand the motion was made, that it seems to, lacking a second, I think it-
Right.
We'll just let it go. Because the discussion isn't, we're not moving forward at this point.
So, I think, you know, for your knowledge, I don't see a lot of opposition to these waivers that you're asking for, other than the fact that we don't wanna vote on them tonight and write it down.
Okay, all right.
I would almost word that, that we don't wanna vote on it tonight to find out if the engineering's not gonna work, and then be set to sit there with a problem.
Right.
Fair enough. All right, I'm satisfied with that answer from the board, so, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really missed this.
Good debate.
Well, yeah, and the whole thing, you know, kinda brought back some memories from- Was it really that long ago that that special permit was before the board?
That was 2020.
Really? Boy, time flies.
Yeah.
Zoom meeting.
All right, so we go back to our agenda, we skipped over number four with the discussion of the zoning amendments, because we thought it might take some time, Bill.
So, I did, you do have copy in your handout tonight of the draft. We'll talk about them tonight, or we could defer, but we do need to think about a schedule.
I did have a thought in regards to the EV charging stations. So, one of the issues that was raised at the town meeting was nonprofits. I don't know if we could put some wording in there that we would encourage nonprofits to conform to the policy or to the bylaw, but not make it a requirement of them.
Yeah, I don't know if you can do that.
I don't know if you can either.
If you can pick who it applies to and who it doesn't.
Right.
I mean, zoning applies uniformly, so it's difficult to say it applies to you, but not to me.
You can't make exclusions, okay. That was a question that was raised at town meeting, and I don't know how, whether that was decisive.
So, like, if there was a church in town that was expanding its parking lot beyond 10 spaces, and that's where it was falling into our site plan review, they would be required to put in the- Okay.
Yeah.
And same thing with the school?
They could waive it, right?
Yeah, can they waive it?
Let's say they expand the parking lot at Mason Road Elementary for 20 more cars. They're gonna put a-
Well, I think you've waived requirements in the past.
Okay.
But-
Can that go to ZBA?
But it has to be a definitive plan though, right? We can't waive anything.
No, it's the site plan.
Can I make a comment? Because, you know, I was a member of the board when we talked about that.
Yeah.
One of the main reasons that that failed that night on the floor at the town meeting was because one of the local businesses' owners got up, and he had a particular issue with the way that it was worded, as far as that there being some ambiguity as to what considered construction of a parking lot. And his question was, if you tore up all of the pavement, would that constitute, would that trigger the rule? And that's what the concern was.
That was Mr. Spall's question, I think.
Yeah, that, exactly, I couldn't remember what it was, but-
I removed the word renovated.
Gotta have something, right. So, as long as you take care of that, I think it's got a pretty good chance of maybe getting through.
Yeah.
The other thing to be aware of is that, you know, the state is aggressively pursuing electric vehicles, and there's a new stretch code, which will require EV charging stations, but that's optional for the town to act on.
The town hasn't adopted the stretch code, has it?
The previous stretch code.
It did.
We have an energy stretch code.
But now, there's a new one that's just been developed.
Yep. So, effectively, we'd be getting ahead of it, just a bit.
Yes.
Is this part of the green communities too?
I have that question too, I don't know yet, I've asked, but I haven't gotten an answer yet.
Okay. Because we did, we did make that list, right?
We are a green community and have gotten numerous grants.
So, we're in E for the, for the-
E.
For the article, CS.
Thank you.
So, do you wanna just go over them quickly, or do you wanna post them?
When's the deed due? When do we have to have this in by, to have public hearings and stuff?
Yep, so, I was thinking we'd probably have a public hearing at the second meeting in April, which means I need to advertise in early April to make the deadline.
When is the meeting, May?
Excuse me?
When's the town meeting?
The day of May.
It's the Monday before Memorial Day.
The one thing I was gonna say-
22nd of May.
The one thing I was gonna say on the first one, Bill, with the, where it quotes in here multiple times, and that was getting back to what Steve was saying, and what Mr. Spall had to say. There's no definition of normal maintenance in that, in our bylaw. So, I think we should either put a footnote at the end of this, or somewhere in the, if we have a definitions, if we could put in, normal maintenance is equal to things such as crack filling, sanding and sealing, yeah, asphalt sealing.
What section are you looking at?
I'm looking at the first one, the article, the planning board's site plan review zoning amendments, where you took out the word additional.
Okay.
I think there was a lot of questions as to what was normal maintenance. What was considered normal maintenance, like striping the lines, filling the cracks, putting the new sealer, blacktop sealer on.
Okay.
That's, that's normal maintenance.
Okay.
If you have to physically dig, dig up, remove asphalt, or dig in the ground and add asphalt, that's renovation of construction, you know?
Mr. Chairman, maybe there could be a threshold, a certain percentage of the asphalt being disturbed.
It is.
Because if you just word it as just digging, and if they wanna dig up a rock that's sticking up-
No, no, it is, it says, construction or renovation of parking facilities involving five, but fewer than 10. So, if you're in between five or 10 spots, you're gonna engage this threshold, which was, you know, definitely more than what Parking Shop did.
Yeah, so that's for a minor segment.
That was hundreds of spots.
Yeah.
So, I can draft a definition of normal maintenance that would-
Yeah, I think that's, that would put a lot of people's mind at ease, you know, because I think they're afraid that if they're gonna just go put some new stripes on their parking lot, that they're gonna get stuck with having to come before us to have a site plan review.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not the intent.
And then, the second one was the requirement for the electrical vehicle charging stations. Yeah, I think we just gotta, gotta try it.
These both got majorities at the meeting.
They did, yes.
They just get the-
The two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
So, I think we just try it again.
Question is, somebody says they can't afford to put these in, and what?
It's becoming the cost of doing business.
Yeah, let's say, hey, I don't have the money to put all this in.
There's a lot of costs involved in development, no matter what you require, so-
Wouldn't a person receive some benefit from this in terms of revenue, potentially? I don't know how the charging, you know, the actual monetary aspect-
Yeah, you're not giving this away for free.
No, I know, I understand.
The people that pull up with an electric car, they gotta swipe their card, and they're paying for it.
So, as you, as the property owner, do you get some, the utility company obviously is compensated, but it goes directly to them, bypass you entirely?
You're not selling, you're not selling electricity to the car driver at the same kilowatt-hour charge that Mass Electric is charging, or National Grid is charging. You can add, you can add whatever you want to it.
It's currently the only ones that we know of, that I know of, that's front of the library.
Yeah, and what's your revenue off that? How much money you make off that, Clark?
That's a good question, I don't really know that we do.
How much did you spend, and how much did you put into that?
I will tell you that yesterday, I think it was, I actually saw a car that was plugged in.
I was gonna ask you, what do you consider a low-impact parking spot? Low-impact vehicle parking spot?
Marty's has a Nichols student who comes to Marty's parking.
Marty's is out of commission, they put a bag over it.
Marty ripped that out.
Marty's is gone.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Really?
There was a bag over it, and now I think it's gone.
I don't know what happened with that, but that didn't last all that long, frankly. You know, it, the way I envision this is, you know, if you look at gas, you can always buy cheaper gas in Southwood, but you have to leave Dudley to get cheaper gas, because it's not convenient in terms of the lower price here. Well, we wanna put ourselves behind the eight ball in terms of these EV charging stations. You gotta go to Auburn to charge a dying car, because there's nothing provided for you in time. You know, and as far as industry is concerned, you're gonna bring somebody in, you've gotta have access to this stuff. Your company is being very responsible in regards to increasing the number of them available to employees.
They bought four Teslas, and they've got 20 charging stations.
At some point, an employee, or prospective employee, might look at this and say, hey, the difference is, I can get my car charged here, where I can get this job for the same money as you're gonna pay me, but I can't charge my car here. You know, it's a competitive advantage, if, potentially, for some businesses, I suspect. Worse than that, it becomes an expectation, as we move further along, and all you're gonna see on the road are some combination of Teslas, Bolts, or whatever else is out there.
Not according to Trump, when he gets, if he gets back in office, he's throwing all that away.
That's got less chance than our voting on waivers.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know about that.
All right.
Potential amendment would be a battery energy storage bylaw. There seems to be an increasing demand for these kinds of facilities to store energy.
And we do have what now, a total of four solar farms in Dudley?
Right.
So-
And even industries now are doing these separate from solar farms, where they can have, they can store battery when it's cheap, you know, energy when it's cheaper, and then release it when it's-
Is that something that you think you can get from another town?
Oh, yeah, somebody's got to-
And make it as a proposal?
If you're interested, I would pursue that, and I can have it for you by the next meeting.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay.
And I think we'll try the shared driveway thing again.
How about the electrical inspector, there are rules and regulations in that in his book? Have you asked him?
On what?
On battery storage.
There are, yeah, UL requirements for those systems.
Yes, requirements for everything.
And I can certainly run it by the fire chief as well, to make sure that they-
Yeah, and I'm sure if it's like lithium ion batteries, it's gotta be in a container that's sealed twice and all that stuff.
Firefighting issues involved.
Improper ventilation, because you don't want it to get too hot, you don't want it to get too cold.
Right. So, you know, these have been around a while, so they've gotten the code issues worked out, so I think there are standards that we can reference.
I think there's probably something you can buy right off the shelf that's already, meets all the regulations. You just gotta buy it, it's like a container, they just drop it off, and you set it at a level position, and you plug it in, yeah?
Well, you can buy your own off-grid power and everything, and all energy sells whatever you want.
Okay, so that takes care of the upcoming town meeting forum articles, and after that, we went through the planning board. We're down to comments from the planning board.
I've had a couple. So, Bill, this is kind of part of the site plan review zoning amendment that we were just talking about, and kind of a little bit about what our first applicant this evening was hinted at a couple of times. When it comes to parking lots, I get confused sometimes about what our task is about these reviews, and what is left to other departments. So, the floodplain, I know the floodplain's supposed to be protected, we're not supposed to be building inside of it, but everybody keeps saying Conservation Commission. So, if they're going to the Conservation Commission, why do we even talk about it? I get confused about that sometime. We're talking about an aquifer protection, and the applicant made it seem like they're taking it, they're doing it, so why are we even talking about it? Other well, you know, can anybody just put as many wells as they want to on their property? And so that I'm not aware of, I don't know the rules governing that, but the applicant was just gonna go do it without, I don't know why we're talking about it, if it's not under our jurisdiction. And then, these kind of parking lots are the same thing. When you read the project narrative that was in our inbox about this whole project, they kept on stating that they're not increasing the amount of impervious area. As a matter of fact, they're decreasing it by 3,000 square feet. The matter of fact, they're decreasing it by 3,000 square feet. But that whole area back there was built like a thousand years ago, and any kind of stormwater management that would be modern, and that would be possibly adopted by Dudley or has been adopted by Dudley, isn't even being addressed at all. So what kind of a, what kind of, and I should probably know this, but what kind of requirements does Dudley have as far as stormwater management? If you're building a new parking lot, can you just surface drain it anywhere you want to, or does it have to be treated, percolated back underground? My guess is percolated, right?
The, the, the standard is the Mast EP stormwater standards.
Okay.
So they have to comply with those, and that's part of our job, is to make sure that they're met.
Okay, so for that whole entire thing there, they went from a change of use, it went from an abandoned mill building now to a dope selling facility. So change of use means that you're bringing it up to normal standards. So all they have out back there is gravel parking lots, and putting all kinds of equipment pads that may or may not be leaking stuff on top of these gravel parking lots. And gravel usually is not acceptable for parking lots, there's reasons for that, because of the leaking of fluids from vehicles, et cetera, et cetera, that they're just basically walking all over. If that's under our jurisdiction, and if that's, we're talking about that in their project narrative, and it's like some guidelines about what our, what our jurisdiction, what our, what our task is to make sure we're addressing the right things, and not talking off topic an awful lot. And there was one more. Of course, I forgot what it was. One second. And not that I'm trying to step on anybody's toes, but, and again, my memory isn't what it used to be. I don't remember them three years ago stating anything they were gonna tear down a portion of the building whenever they had that, the special, we had to review the first time.
No, it wasn't, I believe.
So now that we find out that there was a building that's been destroyed, and I'm assuming, of course, that the building inspected, that it has due diligence, and everything's squared away, is it out of order for me to simply ask, was there a hazmat report done? Any kind of a survey done about hazardous materials before they took that apart? Was there any kind of remediation done? That building was old, right?
Right.
Historical society, so, yeah.
The, the property as a whole, I mean, it has had, I believe, had some historic value, just as the Stevens Leonard property does as well.
So again, I don't wanna step on anybody's toes, but it'd be kind of nice, just for the record, they're talking about stabilizing that whole area, that it's quote, quote stabilized. Graves Engineering Report kind of says, well, maybe it isn't stabilized. And then they're saying that they took construction rubble basically to stabilize it. But what is that construction rubble?
Smokestack.
Which is?
Yeah, so it'd be kind of nice just to kind of get some input on that as far as what's going on. As I mean, I, I kind of, and this is probably get a little bit off topic, but I really thought that they were here only for those equipment pads.
Yeah, that's what I understood.
And that was really thrown for a loop, and all of a sudden, you know, there's, there's other stuff is being thrown at us, and 80% of the stuff that's in the narrative wasn't even discussed on their pads, so I'm just really confused there.
I thought there would have been a presentation on the entire plan, and.
Okay.